You ready?
I will call this meeting to order for Tuesday, December 5th, 2023. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Mayor Susan Payne?
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Dusty Wright?
Here.
Commissioner Sharon McDonald?
Here.
Commissioner Josh Reardon?
Here.
Commissioner Stephen Burnett?
Here.
Commissioner Carl Melton?
Here.
Commissioner Nick Paul?
Here.
City Manager Rick Holden?
Here.
City Attorney Ashley Smith?
Here.
The deputy clerk is present. Madam Mayor, we have a quorum.
Thank you, Dylan. Okay, we are going to start with the invocation given by Pastor Tyler Grace of Christ Community Church and the pledge, sorry, given by Mayor Pro Tem Dusty Wright.
Would you pray with me? Father God, I thank you for tonight. I thank you for the city, God, and I thank you for our city leaders, for these commissioners, God, and our mayor. Lord, I pray that a spirit of wisdom, your spirit, God, would be on each one as they handle and manage our city's affairs. Lord, I pray that you would bless them. I pray that you would bless their families, God, for their service and their positions. God, I pray for tonight. We ask you, Holy Spirit, to be here, to bring wisdom, to bring order, God, to bring unity. Lord, that these elected representatives, through the business conducted tonight, would bring about more complete unity in our community. And I pray for us, God, those attending, and the issues that we raise, God. I pray for ears to hear. I pray for a spirit of understanding. And, God, most of all, I pray for grace for all. Lord, we're just people who are trying to build a better society, a better community, and I pray, God, that you help all of us accomplish that tonight. In your son's name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Please follow me in the pledge. A pledge allegiance.
... of the United States of America and the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay. We are going to move on to the approval of the agenda. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
A motion from Commissioner Burnett? Do I have a second?
Second.
A second from Commissioner Melton? All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
All those opposed? And motion passes seven zero. We are going to now move on to presentations. And I have two. Start with Carl.
Sure.
So. Every five years, we have an election in the city, and unfortunately, sometimes we have to say goodbye to some really great commissioners. And tonight, I have the honor of presenting Commissioner Melton with recognition for his service to our community. You know, the thing about being on this commission is that we don't always see eye to eye, but when we keep an open mind, we can find common ground. And I think that's what we've done. It's actually, I think, healthy not to always see eye to eye with people, especially, you know, because we need different perspectives. So I want to thank you for your time on the commission, and we do have a plaque for you in recognition and appreciation of service to the community as a city commissioner from February of 2022 to December of 2023. This is what we have for this week. All right, thank you.[271.12][271.12][applause] I might have one more. I don't know why I didn't bring it, because my hands are small and I can't carry them. We'll go with that. Okay, Commissioner Wright. Okay, I'm going to try to do this one without tearing up. That is not theatrics. I just really like him, and I've been serving with him for a long time. And he made this crazy decision not to run again. Whatever. Some people. But I have been serving with Dusty since 2018. In 2020? What did you give the mayor, Pro Tem?
What?
Twenty-one. In 2021, Dusty was elected or appointed, elected by us, to be my mayor pro tem. And of course, that was my first year as mayor, and I couldn't have asked for better. I honestly could not, and I mean that. You have a great son. And it's, I'm like, you know, it used to be, once upon a time, I was the youngest. I don't seem like a mildest, or whatever, but he's, he's like a son. I mean, really, he is, and same age as, as my kids, somewhere in there. And, but maturity beyond his years and wisdom that I have seen grow as a commissioner since he was first elected. And he has been such a huge help to me. Just, it, just the little things like, here, Susan, here's the sign up sheet, or, you know, keeping me in check. Sometimes you get a little discombobulated when you're out there and you've got a lot going on. So I am going to miss you, but it's not goodbye forever, because you're going to be around. And you run a plumbing company that my husband, like, happened to use play often, so that works out pretty well. So I know that we will see each other. And Dusty's going to spend more time with his kids.
That's right.
And he's got some great kids. And, and I guess now we get to see his dad, who's just elected to our school board, and so the tradition lives on, for sure. But I am, I'm going to miss you. And I want to thank you for just always supporting me and being there and helping me and understanding what your role is and taking it seriously. I appreciate that. I know you've sacrificed a lot just over the last couple of years. So thank you for that. We do have a plaque for you. Again, in recognition and appreciation of your service to the community as city commissioner and mayor pro tem from March of 2018 to December of 2023. Thank you for everything you've done. I appreciate that so much.[448.64][448.64][applause]
I had this little letter written. I was going to say a few words and list all these accomplishments that the city's done and all that stuff. We, over the last eight years, I'm just going to go off the cuff, because I, there's been so much. But just in my time to see projects as the Canadian Channel finished up, the new lake, this was a twelve or fifteen year project. And it's, it's back to fruition and filling up, and several projects like that, North Scenic Extension. It's a macro fix, and I proved some money with a super low interest rate loan for some, to finish the last six and a half miles of the Snake Tank project. They'll put these out in operation and some different things like that. So it's been awesome to be a part of that. I am taking this time to step back. My kids are both in sixth and eighth grade, and fixing to move on to the high school realm. And I feel like that's my calling right now is to be there a hundred percent for them. And I've been saying I won't fall back into this someday, but I've really enjoyed it. All the commissioners, thank you guys for everything you've done for me, and Susan as well. Welcome, Mr. Holden. You've got a lot of speed bumps along the way, but you've got a lot of faith in you, and I think you're going to just have Stephanie, I think, stepping up the last seven months. I don't know how to explain the last seven months I've been doing that, and maybe going through hell, but you guys have persevered through it. You and Susan have walked through it, and with this core city staff, it's been awesome. So with that being said, just thank the community, thank all the commission, and I just challenge you guys to keep this thing going and just steer it in the right direction and do the best for our community and our kids and everyone moving forward.
Thank you.[576.84][576.84][applause] Okay. And before we move on to public comment, I would like to, I don't know that we had a place for this here, but I would like to introduce to everybody our new city manager. He has hit the ground running, for sure, and he came back this week, so we're very excited about that. This is Rick Holden, and if you ever get a chance to just sit and talk to him, he's got a lot of knowledge. So welcome to your first commission meeting.
Thank you very much. I, at one point last Wednesday, I was thinking last Friday was going to be my last day. And somehow I woke up Monday morning, and I found my way up here bright and early, and I've been here ever since and plan to be here until it's over with.
Thank you.
So thank you very much.
Thank you, I appreciate that.[641.96][641.96][applause] Welcome to Alamogordo. We're very glad to have you. Thank you. I know Stephanie's glad you're here, so.
I heard her say that.
Yeah. Okay, we're going to move on to public comment. So I have three people signed up for item fourteen. If you don't mind, I will wait until we get to that item for you to speak, if that's okay. And with that, I will move on to these others. Is it DeNatra or Janatra?
Yeah, DeNatra.
I know, I should know this. I'm sorry. I do know who you are. DeNatra Thomas. Let me just tell everybody, you get three minutes. Unfortunately, I cannot let you go past the three minutes, so you will have three minutes to speak. And if you will state your name for the record, come up to the microphone and state your name for the record, and we will give you three minutes. And there is a timer up here. I'm not trying to be mean. It's actually, actually a purpose behind it, so. Thank you. Thank you for being here.
Hello, hi, my name is DeNatra Thomas, servant of the Lord. And I'm out here with these children. I'm out here with the broken homes. I'm out here with the drug addicted mamas. I'm out here with the domestic violence. The thing that a lot of parents have been telling me since this post came up about the 250 to 500 finding the parents. Alamogordo is a town of prosperity, but it's also a town of poverty. They can't afford that. You know, it's like punishing the parents because their kids are making mistakes. We got to give our children hope, knowing that they're going to be somebody one day. I hear of all the accomplishments that y'all made building things on scenic and all these different projects. Hallelujah, amen. What about building something for these children? My kids was raised here. My kids went to high school here. And what'd they do? They smoked weed, they, they drunk, because they had nothing else to do. Why can't we get one of these buildings that's old and remodel it for these kids to do culinary art? For these kids to be swimming? For these kids to get more help? There's so many of those kids out there that could barely read, but they're in high school, and they're ashamed to ask for help. As commissioners, as mayors, as governors, as state, city managers, attorneys, y'all jobs, our jobs, all of our jobs, is to know our community, to know the people in Alamogordo and their suffering, and to sit up there and put, to enforce $250 or $500 if their kids go out, it's wrong. You're punishing parents because the kids are being rebuffed because they don't have nothing to do. And also, you got to think about the people that want to move to Alamogordo. How are they going to feel? Oh, my, my children mess up, I got to keep paying these fines? That would stop people from wanting to come to Alamogordo. Alamogordo is a beautiful, loving community with a whole bunch of beautiful people in it, but we just got to take the time to do what's right by the people, in Jesus' name. We say that we love the Lord and we serve the Lord, let's do by the Lord and show the Lord, and make sure these kids have somewhere to go. Instead of hanging out, smoking weed, and getting drunk, and teen pregnancy. I was, I was a person with a teenage pregnancy, but still, the things, if we show them and give them and make a project about them, we're giving them hope. In the name of Jesus, that's all I have to say.
Thank you, Ms. Thomas. I appreciate it.[855.76][855.76][applause] Okay, we have next, we have Courtney, is it McCary? McCary? McCary.
I have everything written down. I was just going to read from this paper, including my name, so. Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, Commissioners, and new city manager, Mr. Holden. My name is Courtney McCary Squires, and I'm here representing a grassroots organization in Alamogordo called With Many Hands. We are a community-based nonprofit organization focused on uniting working class people to accomplish positive change in our community. One of the current issues we are focused on is addressing the issue of food sovereignty and helping to eliminate the concern of food insecurity while also increasing access to locally grown produce and helping strengthen Alamogordo's local food economy. We have been working on a campaign known as Public Land for Food for the better part of a year, and in this time, we have been able to assemble a leadership team consisting of seven actively involved community members, amass over 500 signatures of support via a digital and paper petition, and cultivate a Facebook group community of over 300 residents who are ready to be the change they wish to see in the world. Several of the supporters of the Public Land for Food campaign are in attendance this evening to express our gratitude. So if you support the campaign, go ahead and wave at me. So these people have all been participating in this Public Land for Food campaign. The premise of our campaign was to request that the city of Alamogordo designate several parcels of vacant land, primarily empty residential lots that have been transferred to the city's possession after abatement, as community gardens. Our organization has requested access to these city-owned properties in order to regenerate them and to make them activated spaces to benefit the population of Alamogordo. Our goal is to install free-to-the-public community gardens where With Many Hands would be able to offer fresh, locally grown produce to the community free of charge. Our intention will be to host free community classes on how to grow, harvest, cook, and preserve the produce from these gardens. These properties will fall under the jurisdiction of the Parks and Rec Department so that the general public will have access to this land in the same manner as any public park in Alamogordo. I'm here to extend our sincerest gratitude from the member of, members of our grassroots organization for the official completion and signing and filing of the memorandum of understanding between the city of Alamogordo and With Many Hands. We are thrilled to be able to continue the work of increasing community resiliency and developing more avenues for residents to access locally grown food. This memorandum will allow our organization to install our first garden at 601 Maryland Avenue and utilize the Dudley School facility to host a variety of relevant classes. So once again, I just wanted to express our appreciation to the city of Alamogordo for being willing to partner together and giving us the opportunity to go the extra mile to make Alamogordo a more beautiful, resilient, and enjoyable place to live. Thank you so much for your time.
I am watching on social media, and I love what you're doing, so thank you. Okay. And we have one more. Ryan? Ryan, can you?
Sowers.
Sowers?
Yes.
Okay. Ryan Sowers. And you will have three minutes if you'll state your name for the record.
My name is Ryan Sowers, and before my two comments, I just want to appreciate Courtney. I've been kind of helping her with everything, and with, with Many Hands, it's a great organization, so I support that. Thank you. Yeah, I've only been living here for about six months, and in a short time I've been here, a couple of issues have come up, and one of the, and normally, I am a person who doesn't want to come to you with problems, I'd rather come to you with solutions, but I'm at a draw. So the one thing is, the one thing I've been hearing or rumbling around is that there are certain citizens, senior citizens, some of them are veterans, and they're having issues getting to their doctor's appointments because they're in either Las Cruces or they're in El Paso. And some of them are afraid of driving at night or are just unable to drive that far for that long without medical issues. And my, the only idea that I can kind of come up with is on my own, is if there's some kind of coordination with VFW, American Legion, or something like that, so that something could come together and have like some sort of shuttle bus for them, you know, or some sort of assistance. You know, even if they have to pay five, 10 bucks for it per ride or something, if there's something that can help them out, I think they would appreciate it. And the other thing that has come up is that since I've been volunteering at the zoo and not representing them, I don't, I'm not seeing anything on every hand, but one of the things I'm seeing is that there is a little bit of a struggle with getting the animals a wide variety of food. They're getting the basics that they need, you know, they're getting the, you know, the things that they need for like vegetables or their proteins, but it's the variety. You know, that they kind of need, A, for, we all like variety in our meals, so why shouldn't they? Secondly, they always tell us, we always hear, from nutritional background or purpose, we should eat a variety of fruits and vegetables, because that's how you get a well-balanced diet. So, and here's one where I don't have a solution for, other to suggest an organization like Misfit Foods or Imperfect Produce, who goes around to local groceries and the things that are, like apples with a ball on it, or a potato with five eyes on it. They take the ones that we don't like because they don't look right, take them in, and either give them to food banks or sell it to people who will take it in, like us. I'm wondering if that's the way we could do that, you know, to support the zoo. And with that, that's all I have. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.[1285.24][1285.24][applause] Okay. All right. Do you mind if I flip the two? Okay. I'm going to flip the city manager's report and remarks and inquiries by the city commission, and I'm going to start with remarks and inquiries. I think everybody kind of knows. But I'm going to come down here before Stephanie has a heart attack. And. Boy, I saw a family doing.
You're so beautiful.
I don't know. I was like, that part didn't occur to me. So I, oh. So I wanted this to be a surprise, and the only way to make it a surprise was to put it during remarks and inquiries from the city commission. But I did feel like it was really important that we take a moment to recognize Stephanie. I don't know if she thought that I just wasn't going to do the campaign, but I would never do that. So you, Dusty sort of alluded to some things earlier. I will tell you that for those of you that don't keep up with the commission or, or aren't aware, Stephanie was pretty much thrown into a role early this year that she did not plan on being a part of. And I don't think that was like being her two, double twenty-three four half, no. But she handled it, and as the leader that she is, and she is an incredible leader, she handled it with grace and with efficiency, and we were very blessed. So Stephanie went from being our assistant city manager to our acting city manager. She, as I said, stepped into a role that, it was pretty, pretty intense. For those of you that, I don't think I need to really remind anybody, on July 15th of this year, very early, on a Saturday morning, I will never forget it, as long as I live, we had an officer shot in the line of duty. And I, I was actually getting ready to go out of town, and Stephanie texted all of us, and I called her, and it was just like, it was like a whirlwind after that. Obviously, I canceled my plans, but I watched her jump into action and think of every little detail. And I have been so honored to work beside her and alongside of her, and I was just in awe, because, you know, I, you know, as the mayor, you kind of expect that you might have to do some things like that. It was always my biggest fear when I was elected in 2016, within six months, we had an officer killed. And you remember that time Nadia was here, and it was a very scary time for us, and we hadn't had an officer killed in the line of duty about 40 years before that, I think, and it was 40 years to the day we'd had an officer killed. And, yeah, I think I was saying that right. And, and it was always my biggest fear when I was elected mayor that something like this could happen. The police are, my passion, if you will, I really believe that we need a strong police force, and I've really been a strong advocate for that, because I was always concerned that something like this could happen. And of course, it did, and we don't know why these things happen, but when something like that happens, you need a strong leader. And not just as the mayor, but, but as a city manager, you know, everybody, we watch Law &amp; Order and some of these shows, and we have this misconception that the mayor, like, runs the city, and, and in some cases, that's true. Albuquerque, Los Angeles, I think Chicago, some of those places. But here, the day-to-day operations are really done by the city manager, and Stephanie stepped into that role beautifully. We got through Officer Ferguson. We've had a couple more murders since then. It's been a little crazy this year, I know, and, and, you know, we don't know why. We don't know why these things happen, but when they happen, you need somebody strong in that role to make sure that there's continuity in the city, to make sure that, that just because you're dealing with that doesn't mean everything else stops, right? You still have to have all the other stuff. You've got to have water and sewer and trash service, and the rec center still has to run, and the senior center, and all of these other things still have to happen. And that's where it takes a strong leader. And so I wanted to take a few minutes to recognize Stephanie for all her efforts. It's been incredible. I'm, I'm really glad she's not going anywhere, because I would totally miss her presence. But I have, I've been honored, honestly, to work alongside of you, and, you know, I think we've learned a little bit from each other, and it has made my job so much easier, just to, to watch that, that calmness that she brings out. I mean, now, if you know Stephanie, you know, she's not exactly calm in the sense that she's going a million miles a bit all the time, but she's always calm when she needs to be, and that's what a real leader does. So we were trying to figure out a way to honor her, and I just said, you know, a plaque is just not enough. So we are presenting Stephanie with the mayor's commendation from the city of Alamogordo in recognition of your unwavering commitment to the citizens of Alamogordo under extraordinary circumstances. Your strong leadership, invaluable contributions, and willingness to rise to the occasion when most needed make you especially deserving of this distinction. And so thank you for all you've done. Trying not to do that, Ryan. But I really do, I have such respect for her and her, her love of education. If you don't know her, she said, I think, I've been going to school the whole time I've been married, and I'm looking at her wall and going, yes, it shows, Stephanie, it shows. And so for those of you don't know, she has a couple of marriages, and now she's working with a doctor. She just approved for your stay at the research. So now she's a doctoral candidate. And so I have a love of education, and so it's another thing that we have in common. If I listen, you know, we talked a lot about when we were younger, and we were young, so it's with me. Very parallelized in a lot of ways, you know, over the old one, but very parallelized in a lot of ways, and I really am going to need to go. Thank you for all that you've done for our city. It did not go unnoticed, and we really appreciate it.[1717.44][1717.44][applause]
Just like the House on Mission.
Okay. So since we're on Commissioner comments, does anybody have anything else that they?
I have just a few things. On the, on Dewey, turning, or, on Florida and Dewey, turning east on the Dewey, there's a, there was a water break there, but we need to fill, refill in the dirt, because it's creating a crater there, sort of when people turn in on that Dewey lane. And then on, in Indiana, between 13th and 14th as well. That's it.
Anybody else?
Let me elaborate on that a little bit. I, I've actually had a couple of calls in the last couple of weeks about patches and water leaks, and I've noticed it over the last, I don't know, couple, actually, last year, that the amount of time it's taken us to patch these after we have water breaks. patch these after we have water breaks. I don't know if you'd be able to compile a list or whatever. I've heard upwards of almost 500 holes that we have in the road that haven't been patched yet. So if we could maybe have a reason why it's taking, is it a staffing issue or a material supply issue or whatever that is that's contributing to that?
I can allude a little bit to that. Speaking with Stephanie last week, because I had the same question. A couple of months back, we looked into putting it out to an RFP to catch up on all of our asphalt patches because we have fallen behind. And I think that's, RFP is out. Stephanie can probably fill us in on that one, but I think that RFP is out to have a contractor come in and.
So they were working on it. I believe that it was going out for approval. I think, Rick, have you approved the RFP?
Yeah.
Okay.
We've been talking about doing that RFP for about eight months, so.
I know. I signed it, so it should be in the mail right now.
Get ourselves caught up.
Yes, sir.
Okay. I called on that one too, yesterday.
Actually, could we add, down there on Florida and 10th Street, right there, kind of between John Wheeler's office and the old Sable Matt, you probably won't know where that is, but it's down there, the curb, we've had a water leak, and for the longest time it was just filled with base course. They finally went in there and patched it, but it's still got a bunch of waves, the curb sinking. We could.
We'll get a look at that. And I've been briefed on some of our street issues, and obviously, I've driven on the same streets that you're talking about. So I've figured out very quickly that will become one of our priorities. So we will get on those and get back a report appropriately to the commission and mayor.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? No? Okay. Okay. Now we'll get to city manager report.
Honorable mayor, members of the commission, and the great citizens of Alamo Gordo. If you, if you thought I was going to come here and just go in the office and sit down, you might be wrong. I officially started on the 27th. However, I think since September, I've been coming in on a very regular basis, participating in meetings, trying to learn a little bit about the community, figure out what all's going on. And so when we got to the 27th, that was not a day where we just sit around and fill out human resources paperwork. I literally hit the ground running. We did begin with an early morning staff meeting, went promptly from that into actual department visits. Part of my, part of my goal for this community is to be a city manager that is visible in our community. I, instead of having employees coming to the Willie Estrada Civic Center to sit and listen to somebody that they really don't know and don't want to really hear from, I said, I'm going to the employees. So I have been, to the best of my ability, in between calls and some of the odd things that have happened to me in a week, I have been out going to our departments and meeting, meeting the employees, which is a great employee base. I have to tell you that I can't think of a better response and a thank you to Stephanie that you gave her. She is, she's priceless. As much as I have joked and kidded around with her about driving my truck around for months, I have learned a tremendous amount about this community and the needs, and she keeps me very well adapted about what's going on. But I've continued with my department meetings even today. Before we came to this meeting, I had to stop, and I said, Evelyn, I have a meeting I need to go to that you will also be at, which is the commission meeting. And I have been talking about the budget since early afternoon. And so I can assure you that what I see in our budget process is probably one of the best that I've seen in any city, how it works and how that department has put together the process. So between the staff, the mayor and the commission, as you become involved in this process throughout the budget process up until the early part of the summer, I think you're going to be very busy. But I have hit the ground running, hitting those things right from the get-go. My first day here, who would have ever thought that the new city manager is going to have to preside in a personnel hearing involving a number of people that have been terminated and were appealing that decision? First day here. My fifth day here, we inherited a bowling recreation center that you're aware of, and so we have secured that building and taken possession of that building and are now working with our city attorney to appropriately notify the respondent there of the appropriate defaults and of the action that we must take as a community to take that facility back over and get it back in the hands of something productive for our community. Make no mistake, that's a very vital part of our community that we now own. And I know you've been inundated with calls as we have also, but we will work with the community and with you to get this resolved so that we can take care of it. I've been looking at some of the development issues going on in our community. We have issues that I will want to address with you at some point very soon, to talk about drainage issues and the completion of streets that are partially done. When we plat properties, we need to follow those guidelines and be sure that we put things in like they need to be put in so that we protect our great citizens from flooding and other things that we have control over. I've looked at substandard buildings. I've walked through a building downtown that I would encourage none of you to walk into until we take some action to get that resolved. We certainly have some issues out there that I'm accustomed to dealing with in communities and, again, have hit the ground running. I did take some time last Saturday night to attend the Main Street Festival downtown. What a wonderful opportunity to showcase that part of our downtown and the history that goes behind that. I've been told some stories about some of those buildings that we probably can't talk about in here, but I'm surprised at the vast history that goes with that downtown and the amount of work that's been done down there. This week, I'm going to be a judge in the parade. So if you're in a float and you're going to be in the parade, whoever waves the most and yells the most, I'm going to give you that vote. Again, thank you for the opportunity. And to the citizens of our community, my office is an open office. Unless I'm in a meeting or have the door shut, when you come in there, Teresa has been instructed to allow you to come to my office. I want to hear the things that are going on in this community that affect you. Can I fix them all? No, I cannot. As the mayor adequately stated while ago, in the, in the commission manager form of government, my job is to operate the day-to-day operations of this community. But in order to do so effectively, I kind of need to know some things that are going on in this community. And Lord, I have heard a lot of things in a week's period of time. And so I feel certain that we're going to be highly visible, highly busy. And again, thank you very much, mayor, commissioners, for the opportunity to serve this community. I look quite forward to it. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you. I walked into, I went to the Christmas downtown also, and I walked into one of my favorite businesses, and they said, oh, I just met your new city manager. And I said, oh, really? Where's he at? There's like 2,000 people down there. I'm like, oh, I'm never going to find him. Forget it. So. And I had just gotten back from Colorado, so I hadn't even had a chance to see you yet. And my husband says I can't go to any more of those things because I come home with five new things every time I go to one. So what the hecker. Anyway, that was a great, it was a great, a great event. It really was. Congratulations to Alamo Gordo Main Street on another successful event. It was a lot of fun. Okay, so we're going to move on to the consent agenda. Does anybody have anything they'd like to pull off the consent agenda?
Okay.
No? Okay. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
I have a motion from Mayor Pro Tem Wright. Do I have a second?
Second.
A second from Commissioner McDonald? Okay. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Carl Melton?
Aye.
Nick Paul?
Aye.
Stephen Burnett?
Aye.
Josh Reardon?
Aye.
Sharon McDonald?
Aye.
Dusty Wright?
Aye.
Susan Payne?
Aye. Motion passes seven zero. We have nothing pulled off the consent agenda. We're going to move on to item 13, Consider an Act Upon Prioritizing Dilapidated Structures. And our code enforcement manager, Josh Sides, has some information on that. It also says assistant city manager, but I have a feeling that, okay.
This was the presentation that was supposed to come forward as a result of making sure that the beautification was still a priority of the commission. So Josh and I kind of worked on it, and so it's been probably about a month, but here it is.
Okay. Thank you.
Hello.
How are you?
I'm great.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, Commissioners, City Manager Holden. I bring forward to you tonight a presentation about dilapidated structures as well as kind of touching on some other aspects of code enforcement. The ultimate goal of code enforcement, what is it? The code enforcement component provides those services most commonly associated with enforcing code violations relating to public health, safety, and welfare. So what is the ultimate goal of code enforcement for the city of Valamo Gordo is what the question we will answer. This is a little behind times. As of October 11th of this year, there was 467 active cases being investigated by four code enforcement officers. I have a couple of those, but they take the majority of those. That's averaging out to about 93 cases per year. I can tell you, as of November 30th, there was 2,299 cases taken in the fiscal, in the calendar year of 2023 by code enforcement that they looked into and investigated. That's 500, almost 600 cases per officer this year. Most, the most common municipal ordinance violations are accumulation of garbage, refuse, and debris, outdoor storage, outdoor automotive storage, and weeds. The most common International Property Maintenance Code violations are accessory structures, which are beyond that of just a shed or a detached garage. That includes fences and things like that, chain-link fences, center-block fences. Exterior walls, protective treatment, and roofs and drainage are the top four most violated codes in International Property Maintenance Code. Dilapidated structures. This is a dilapidated structure here in Alamo Gordo. You have not seen this one yet. This will come in January, probably. Stairways, decks, and porches, obviously, on this one, there is none. That's way too big of a step down. It's a violation of not only IPMC but residential code as well. Window skylights and door frames have to be weather-tight, not allow, not emit rain or elements into the structure. Protective treatment, there's no paint or protective treatment on the side of this structure. That is just a brief overall. That is common things that when I am driving or we get a complaint of a dilapidated structure, protective treatment's a big one, and the roof is another one that'll get me to stop and look further into what's going on with that structure. So what does dilapidated mean? This, these are all definitions International Property Maintenance Code. Unsafe structures, and unsafe structure is one that is found to be dangerous to life, health, property, or safety of the public or the occupants of the structure by not providing the minimum safeguards to protect or warn occupants in the event of fire, or because such structure contains unsafe equipment, or is damaged, decayed, dilapidated, structurally unsafe, or of such faulty construction or unstable foundation that partial or complete collapse is possible. So that is the definition of an unsafe structure. A structure unfit for human occupancy is a structure that is, whenever the code official finds that the structure, that such structure is unsafe, unlawful, or because of the degree to which the structure is in disrepair or lacks maintenance, is unsanitary, vermin or rat-infested, contains filth and contamination, or lacks ventilation, illumination, sanitary or heating facilities, or other essential equipment required by this code, which is International Property Maintenance Code, or because the location of the structure constitutes a hazard to the occupants or structure, of the structure or to the public. Oops, I hit the wrong button. Dangerous structures. This is a very long one. This is a lot of, we see a lot of dangerous structures because there is a lot to do with dangerous structures. This actually changes starting in January. This changes the hazardous structures International Property Maintenance Code. But for the purpose of this code, any structure or premises that has any or all of the conditions or defects described as follows shall be considered to be dangerous. Any door, aisle, passageway, stairway, exit, or other means of egress that does not conform to the approved, approved building or fire code of the jurisdiction as related to the requirements for existing buildings. The walking surfaces of any aisle, passageway, stairway, exit, or other means of egress is so warped, worn loose, torn, or otherwise unsafe as to provide a safe and adequate means of egress. Any, any portion of a building, structure, or a pertance that has been damaged by fire, earthquake, wind, flood, deterioration, neglect, abandonment, vandalism, or by other acute, other cause to such an extent that it is likely to partially or completely collapse or to become detached or dislodged. Any portion of a building or any member, a pertance, or ornamentation of an exterior thereof that is not, not of sufficient strength or stability, or is not so anchored, attached, or fastened in place so as to be capable of resting natural or artificial loads of one and one-half of the original design value. The building or structure or partial, part of the building or structure because of dilapidation, deterioration, decay, faulty construction, the removal or movement of some portion of the ground necessary for support, or for any other reason is likely to partially or completely collapse, or some portion of the foundation or underpinning of the, of the building or structure is likely to fail or give way. The building or structure or any portion thereof is clearly unsafe for its use and occupancy. The building or structure is neglected, damaged, dilapidated, unsecured, or abandoned as to become an attractive nuisance to children who might want to play in, play in the building or structure to their danger, becomes a harbor for vagrants, criminals, immoral persons, or enables persons resort to the, to the building or structure for committing a nuisance or unlawful act. That is what a lot of our building, our dilapidated buildings fall under, is seven. And that's why I bring a lot of dangerous structures in front of you because of seven, because they are attractive nuisance. Any building or structure that has been constructed, constructed, exists or maintained in violation of any specific requirement or prohibition applicable to such building or structure provided by the approved building or fire code of the jurisdiction, or of any law or ordinance to such an extent as to present either a substantial risk of fire, building collapse, or any other threat to life and safety. A building or structure used or intended to be used for dwelling purposes because of inadequate maintenance, dilapidation, decay, damage, faulty construction or arrangement, inadequate light, ventilation, mechanical or plumbing system, or otherwise is determined by the code official to be unsanitary, unfit for human habitation, or in such condition that it is likely to cause sickness or disease. Any building or structure because of lack of sufficient or proper fire resistance rate of construction, fire protection systems, electrical system, fuel connections, mechanical system, plumbing system, or other cause is determined by the code official to be a threat to life or health. Any portion of a building remains on site after demolition or destruction of the building or structure, or whenever any building or structure is abandoned so as to constitute such building or portion thereof as an attractive nuisance or hazard to the public. That is the definition of a dangerous structure, per International Property Maintenance Code. So what is a code official? The code official shall be appointed by the chief appointing authority of the jurisdiction. Deputies, in accordance with the prescribed procedures of this jurisdiction and with the concurrence of the appointing authority, the code official shall have the authority to appoint a deputy code official, other related technical officers, inspectors, other, and other employees. Such employees shall have the powers as delegated by the code official. The code official is hereby authorized and directed to enforce provisions of this code, which is International Property Maintenance Code. The code official shall have the authority to render interpretations of this code and to adopt policies and procedures in order to clarify the application of this, of its provisions. Such interpretations, policies, and procedures shall be in compliance with the intent and purpose of this code. Such policies and procedures shall not have the effect of waiving requirements specifically provided for in this code. After this is a brief video from the city of Arlington pertaining to dilapidated structures that has a lot of good information and gives me a chance to not talk anymore. Oh, actually, I got one more. The code official shall make any required inspections or shall accept reports of inspection by approved agencies or individuals. Reports of such inspections shall be in writing and be certified by a responsible officer of such approved agency or by the reasonable individual. The code official is authorized to engage in such expert opinion as deemed necessary to report on unusual technical issues that arise subject to the approval of the appointing authority. And now's my video. Now's my video. It was working earlier, Tim. Yeah, it worked when you weren't here, Tim. Well, we can skip it. We can go on to the next one if you'll put me back. The main point of that, that video was talking about dilapidated structures and how the belighted structures and dilapidated structures are a public nuisance intended for criminal activity. It goes back to the broken windows theory, which is a theory established in the 70s. Research and statistics when it comes to code enforcement. Research has consistently shown that vacant, abandoned, and deteriorated properties reduce the value of surrounding properties, leading to a decrease in owner's equity and personal wealth. And this is coming from the Center for Community Progress blog of March 24th, 2023. In some cases, properties within 500 feet of one of these properties lost 9.4% of their value. 500 feet is quite a ways from one of these properties, and that's in, that's in the diameter around it. So that, quite a ways. Vacant, abandoned, and dilapidated properties can increase the amount of violent and property crime rates and the costs associated with dispatching police and fire services. In some cases, communities have seen 3.2 times as many drug calls, 1.8 times as many theft calls, and twice the number of violent crimes in neighborhoods where a dilapidated structure has been. And again, this is coming from the Center for Community Progress blog, March 24th of 2023. The U.S. Fire Administration reports that over 12,000 fires and vacant, abandoned, and dilapidated structures are reported each year in the United States. This results in $73 million in property damage annually. Furthermore, fires are likely started because of poor maintenance, faulty wiring, and debris. This is coming from vacant properties, the true consequences, true cost to communities. I did some further research on this topic and did some, in fact, on dilapidated structures on the previous slide. Criminologist William Spielman in Austin, Texas, crime rates on blocks with open abandoned buildings were twice as high as crime rates on match blocks without open abandoned buildings. And that was from 1993 and 2005. Another Scientologist. In high poverty areas, the number of abandoned houses in a given census track correlated with homicide rates. So these are, these are criminologists and sociologists who have done research into dilapidated structures and their correlation to crime rates. Combating dilapidation. These are some ideas that have been proven to be effective throughout the United States and other communities. This is one where administrative fees would come in handy for code enforcement for the city of Vallemagordo, presenting a, pretty much a zero tolerance of we're going to hold property owners accountable for their properties as well as occupants of those properties. In correlation, you have the city of Vallemagordo proposed as well. City of Santa Fe was the only one that had theirs publicly posted without having to make, you know, dozen phone calls. Our inspection, the initial inspection, when we're called out for a complaint or we drive by and see a violation, that's at no cost. And the reinspection after that, we go there, we see the violation, we tell you what the violation is and how to mitigate that violation, we'll go back and reinspect. None of that's at any cost. If that violation is not corrected and we have to go back a second time to reinspect, then it starts costing money, and it starts costing more money each time we have to go back. We're seeing a lot of times, the city manager and I had a long conversation today about properties that have taken, July of '24 will be two years, and they're still not in compliance. So going to municipal court and getting their fines there, these are administrative fees away from any court costs or anything like that. This will hold you, if we see, if we see a violation, everybody's going to have a violation some point in time or another, but we're willing to work with you. With these administrative fees, it will help keep them accountable to a certain degree. The Healthy Properties for Healthy Neighborhoods is not a new initiative. The city of Oxnard, California has one of these programs, and this is a repeat offender program. It applies to properties with three or more separate violations in one year, three or more separate violations at different properties owned by the same property owner, or any violation unresolved for at least one year. There's going to be a mandatory initial meeting with code enforcement, an initial inspection, written notification of all violations, and up to 30 days to comply with those. Inspection fees while you're in this repeat offender program will be charged at double the rate. Requires mandatory yearly inspections, and you have to pass two inspections to be, to be taken out of this program. These are all proposed programs that I've seen that have positive results in other Rehabilitation over demolition. There has been several programs in the state of New Mexico that have started, and then COVID hit, and they've gone by the wayside. There are other programs nationally. One is in Wisconsin that I've looked at quite extensively where rehab over demolish is, is an option. When it comes to their program, they look at the assessed value of the property. If the cost of rehabbing that, that property is over 50% of the assessed value, they demolish. If it's under 50%, they rehab, which is a good, that's not venting the wheel. They already have that. It's established. It works well for them, kind of a thing. But this applies to properties that, the rehab program would apply to properties that do not have structural integrity problems such as settling or large issues with some structural members. Must be by resolution. It's budgetary, budgetarily friendly compared to demolition. Only, it's only to correct the violations, the code violations. We're not, we're not remodeling, we're not in the business of remodeling houses to resell. It's just to bring them back to code. Would follow the same process to recuperate costs as demolition. Demolition currently the process we're taking must be by resolution. Average is roughly about $50,000, give or take, per structure. Obviously, that's give or take because no structure is the same. Leaves vacant lots and must be abated for weeds, trash, and other public nuisances on those lots quite frequently, actually. And the other is a zero tolerance, prosecutorial zero tolerance policy. Here's some statistics from 2019 to 2023. 22% of cases were dismissed, 20% of cases were nullied, and 12% of cases were deferred. From 2019 to 2023, 42% of cases brought to municipal court were either dismissed or nullied. Likes worn law enforcement officers, code enforcement officers enforcing municipal laws of the local government. While law enforcement sees much more severe crimes, code enforcement sees crimes against public comfort, health, and safety. A zero tolerance approach and prosecution of code enforcement cases will hold property owners and those responsible for properties accountable for their properties and the subsequent effect they have on neighborhoods in comfort, health, safety, and monetarily as well. And I know you're going to be thinking there's COVID in there, and all cases were dismissed. So from taking 2019, 2022, and 2023, 41% of cases were dismissed or nullied. What we need is direction from you. Code enforcement requests direction from the commission as it pertains to combating dilapidated structures through a majority vote. Furthermore, code enforcement requests direction from the commission on moving forward with concepts and ideas, many of which, as I explained, other communities throughout the nation use through a majority vote. And I will stand for any questions on this presentation.
Does anybody have any questions?
I just want my computer back. I lost the computer.
You lost your page, and then scroll all the way up. Click on that tab two.
Technical difficulty.
I had them two. It's a gremlin going around.
I know, right?
Click on the downward, with the little ribbon, I think it is.
Everything was working, Tim.
It should come back up.
Okay. Yeah, I think so.
This one was item 13, the next one.
Okay. Does anybody have any questions?
Do you think we ought to wait on this till the new commission is seated in January? So everybody tonight can make a decision, but two of us are leaving. We've got two new ones coming.
Okay.
I said, do we want to wait till the new commission gets seated in January to look at this because we've got two of y'all that are leaving? We're going to have two new ones coming on board. So, like I say, a little unfair. It's kind of like what happened at school board the other night with the naming the superintendent when the new ones are coming on board, so. That's just my thought on it.
How does anybody else feel about it?
I just had a question for Josh. So there's kind of several different programs that you've obviously been looking into. What is your recommendation? Are you guys thinking that maybe there's a mesh and a meld between several of these? Or you want, is it better to focus on one specific one?
These are just the highlights of several different programs that I've seen. These are the highest ranking ones, administrative fees, rehab over demolish. Going with all of those, we're not going to do wrong at all. We're going to, it's starting to let the community know that we take their public health, safety, and comfort seriously. Like it said, within 500 feet of a dilapidated structure can lose up to 9.2% of their value. So got $100,000 house, there goes $9,200 right off the top of it because it's down the block from a dilapidated structure.
Only you could find $100,000 house these days, right?
Yeah. $100,000 was just easy math for me.
Gotcha. Anybody else have any thoughts?
I kind of agree with Josh that we maybe should wait before we take any action on this particular one.
This is going to be a heated topic. I mean, it is because your idea of what's dilapidated, my idea of what's dilapidated, you know, Commissioner Powell's idea of what's dilapidated, they all vary, you know. And like I say, we're losing Commissioner Melton and Mayor Pro Tim Wright, and we've got two coming on board. I just really feel it'd be fair to let the new commission decide how we want to proceed with this.
Commissioner McDonald?
I guess this has been ongoing, so this is not anything new. And I believe that people that, the new commissioners that are coming on also are going to want to get things cleaned up in their district. And I know that we, in District Number Five, I think we all experienced everything that he said about the, the value in properties that are kept up. And, you know, I said, anything else as far as health and safety, I said, because we have, we have a couple of places that are infested with mice. And, you know, I said, we have one where the roaches, the mice, the, all of those things were going to a house that I think can be valued at at least $100,000. So you have people that are waiting for a decision to be made, and I don't think the two commissioners coming on board are going to be changing anything that has been developed. And I'm just speaking for District Number Five. I said, because I believe out of all the districts, and maybe District Two might be a close second, but we lack a lot of, you know, just help in the community by abandoned buildings. And I think I've expressed before that we have a lot of, you know, single parent homes and, you know, we have a lot of widows, women living in, in the homes in that district. And when you have an abandoned house and somebody just moves in, a squatter just moves in next door and he takes over the house, that creates danger for the people living next door. So, you know, I, I just feel that right now, I said, I'm looking at the people in my district, and I would hate to tell them that we're going to wait for another couple of months. If this is going to be on the agenda, the first meeting of the month, I, I'd say okay. But I think we've been putting off and a lot of the things that could happen to people that are living there, that are paying taxes, and they want to be protected. And I don't think it's fair for the people in District Five to have to continue to wait for decisions to be made. And that, I know that house is in the 800 block, and that's been sitting there for years. So I don't know how much longer it has to sit there because some of these houses have been sitting for over 20 years, and they've been in that condition. And I think anybody that has witnessed the summer that we've had here, it dries out the wood, it could easily be a fire, and the house that was taken down in the, I think the third block of, on Texas, they were building fires in there. So we're right back at the same place we were last winter when people were moving into the house, setting fires, and the fire department had to come out and put the, the fire out. So they're using buckets and things like that, and we don't know it could turn over in the house and burn the house down with the people in it, so.
There was a camper fire today, and I thought for sure, I was talking to Stephanie, I thought for sure it was a structure fire. It was down on, was it Maryland?
Maryland.
I thought it was on Maryland, yeah. Yeah. And I just, I thought for sure, oh my gosh, somebody squatted in the house and started a fire or something, but. Does anybody else have any input?
I think, you know, just kind of dovetailing what Commissioner McDonald said, you know, this has been something that's been, you know, something that's continued to be brought, not the specific item, but these items are continued to be brought before the commission, and I don't personally see why there's any difference between waiting for the new commissioners to be seated or discussing and giving some form of direction, whether that's, you know, hey, this option's great, or come back to us with some other items. I don't see the point necessarily in trying to wait until January to address it when we've got, you know, seven able-bodied people here to be able to do that right now, so.
Like I say, all of ours ideas of what's dilapidated and what's not, I for one, you know, protective, what is it called, protective coatings on the outside, you know, every house in Vallemagordo has peeling paint on it. Where are we going to draw the line? Where are we going to, where are we going to stop that?
But it's bricks.
I'm sure it does, it's just you haven't seen it. There's parts of it that, you know.
It's a brick house, so, yeah.
Everybody's house does. Especially on the west side of your house, you're going to have peeling paint.
I think that you can get off into the weeds on that, and it's really not the spirit of what we're trying to do at the end of the day. You know, if somebody's house has a little bit of flaking paint, then I don't feel that we're going to go and cite them for, you know, violation of whatever.
We could.
If I may, that's why I included the definitions of all, everything that is hazardous, dangerous, unsafe for human occupancy, and I read those to you so we all knew this is what code says defines dilapidation. So that way, we didn't have 15 different opinions on what dilapidation was. It's this is what code says, this is what dilapidation is. Do I go based off peeling paint? No, because like Commissioner Rarden said, there's peeling paint on everywhere. But when it's that bad, it catches my eye. But he's got a point. There's peeling paint everywhere. But it's not, I'm not going to send you a violation letter and go, I'm condemning your house because you have paint peeling. That's just not something I'm going to do. If it's unsafe, if it's dilapidated and deteriorated to a point where it is a public nuisance that could potentially have criminal activity within it, like we see a lot, like today's fire, then yes, I'm going to do something about it.
So just out of curiosity, how many of us have received multiple calls about abandoned properties, dilapidated structures? I mean.
I usually don't.
Well, I get them for your district, and I get them for your district, so I get them all the time, so. Well, I don't know. I'm just telling you that.
The next time you get called, can you tell them to call me directly?
I have.
That I just know about it.
I have. Well, I don't know. I mean, I document everything. I have names, I have addresses, I document everything because I don't do the whole, I got multiple calls, so I can document it. But, and I typically pass that directly on to, to Josh. So I think he can verify that I call you quite often with issues on properties. And there are a lot of them. And I mean, I, I agree with you. Clearly, we've had this discussion in the past, and we all have different ideas about it. But, you know, you have said yourself, you're a property owner of several properties. My husband and I are property owners of several properties that we fix up and then we sell. And one of the things that I do when we're looking at a property is I look at the properties around it because I know that if the properties around it are bad, we're probably going to have a hard time selling that house. And it And it could be a deterrent for us, for sure. I think, you know, I think, just if we were looking at like the basics, basically speaking, you know, the house doesn't have to be pretty paint, it doesn't have to be, you know, a gorgeous landscape. But the house has to be clean, and it has to be safe, and it has to be, you know, structurally sound. Quite honestly, if I wouldn't live in it, if I felt like it was that unsafe that I wouldn't live in it, I wouldn't want someone else living in it. So, and I think that that's just very, a very simple, simple way to look at it. And we do have a lot of squatters, and we have, I get calls, gosh, I can think of two or three people that have called me that live on New York on the, I guess it would be the
300 block.
North side of New York, well, the north, not, not, I don't think it's your district, I actually think it's Commissioner Burnett's district.
North of 10th Street.
Yes, north of 10th Street, yeah. Frustrated, just frustrated, and I got one, I think I even saved the voicemail on my other phone, but constantly, she's calling me, and I know she's frustrated, but she's got mice and she's got roaches, and she's telling me that all this stuff is happening, and, and, you know, we're trying, we're trying, we really are trying, but nobody wants to live like that. When you invest in your property, when you spend money, when you, you know, you take the time to care for your property, you don't want to live next door to garbage, you just don't. And I, and I think that that's, I just think that that's very simple. I don't think that that should be, I don't know, this is just my opinion, but I just don't think that it should be a huge discussion on something like that. It's very simple. Nobody wants to live next door to somebody who is infested with mice or rats or filth or there's a stench coming. I mean, that's, I mean, right, I mean, that's pretty simple, I think. So, so I don't know, you know, I hear what you're saying about waiting, but I think I'm in the camp of, if we're gonna wait until the first meeting in January, I'm okay with it. If we're just gonna kick the can down the road, then I'm not okay with that. We need to do something, and I, and I just, I cannot see any, even an incoming commissioner that would disagree with that. So, I don't know, I don't, I'll, I'll, whatever, whatever you guys decide, but I, I don't want to kick the can down the road. We, I get calls all the time, we've got to clean this city up, we just have to. And, and it is unfortunate, and I know a lot of people don't have a lot of money, but doggone it, you can't live in Las Cruces or California or somewhere else and own a dilapidated structure in Alamo Gordo, New Mexico, that you have no attachment to and expect the rest of the taxpayers to put up with that. And I think we can all agree, that's a lot of what we see, is people that, they don't even live here anymore, they just, they have these buildings that, you know, so anyway.
Like what's pictured here on our screen, you know, none of us have a problem with that, you know, it's obviously not rehabilitated, you know, rehabilitatable. But when we start going into ones that people, you know, and we all know people that live in homes that are a little more rundown, they may not be able to afford to fix them, but they're still in livable conditions by their standards. So, and that's kind of where I have the issue there is, is, you know.
But nobody's, nobody's moving anybody out of the home, the homes are.
We haven't, we haven't yet. That was always the discussion years ago with these is, Alamo, we need to clean it up, we all agree with that. But there is hundreds of structures that are uninhabited that we could be looking at and going after. And, but sooner or later, we're gonna get to the ones that do have people living in them that may not meet our criteria of what's livable, but it meets theirs. And we still have to kind of protect their interest in that as well.
Well, I think we are, I think we are protecting the interest because the definition has been read, and nothing said on the screen that I saw, nothing was said about going into a home where people are living, where it's their standard and they're keeping things up. I didn't see anything like that on.
Well, and not only that, what is their standard? We had a house on Michigan that we just declared dilapidated, that a man was living in it, the guy that owned it was living behind him, and there was dog feces all over the place. That's nobody's standard, that is inhumane.
That is not.
No, that is inhumane, and shame on us as a city, if we allow that to happen, shame on us. That is not, that is not a human standard.
Once he closes that door, it's really none of our business what he does inside the house.
Except that the neighbors that can smell it, except for the neighbors that have to live with the mice and the roaches and all the other stuff, then it becomes our business. So, I don't, I don't necessarily agree with that. I think, I think that.
We're gonna agree to disagree on this one.
Yeah, we are.
We don't have problems with tearing down homes like these, but, you know, where do we draw that line of where we should get involved and where we shouldn't is kind of where this goes.
Well, I've said before, I believe in individual property rights, but when those property rights infringe on my property rights, I have an issue with it.
And I think there's certain expectations too, that when you move into a city, that you're living within a community, and you're not gonna, you know.
We've got 50 years' worth of dilapidated buildings that we gotta get caught up on.
Right, and so that's what I don't understand is, where's the issue in trying to move this forward? We're not gonna go and be putting people out of their homes. You know, it's gonna take us two, three, five years to even get to that point. And so, let's take action today, or first meeting in January and move some of this forward, so that we can start cleaning up our city.
We only authorize $250,000 a year for our cleanups.
Absolutely.
Mr. Sides.
More reason to start moving and take some action.
Well, Mr. Sides has mentioned they're between, around $50,000 apiece, so, you know, bring four or five a year, because that's all the money we have budgeted, you know, to start tearing these down, so.
Unless you start putting some things into place, you know, let's start assessing fees to people, let's put the onus on them to have some skin in the game to keep their properties up. If not, I mean, why do we want to set our standard low here in Alamo Gordo? You know, at the end of the day, I don't think that that serves anybody well.
Do we have any, does Las Cruces have any programs there that they do for help fixing up, help rehabbing?
They started one pre-COVID, a rehab program, and it never got off the ground because of COVID. Albuquerque and Cruces were both that had programs that they, they had all the paperwork, everything was ready to go, and then COVID hit.
And they don't have any intention.
And it just, the feet never got underneath it again.
I kind of want to piggyback on that. We, you know, years ago, started the revolving loan fund for sidewalks because we went through, and it was the same scenario. We were forcing people to install sidewalks on the front of their house, a lot of people couldn't afford it.
Right.
You know, so we started that, a low-interest loan where you could come in, and it was, it tied to your water bill or something, I don't remember exactly. You know, maybe we need to look into a program of that, instead of condemning and taking or doing whatever, maybe, maybe a program where we can help these people get their homes brought up to the standard that needs to be brought up. You know, there's a lot of them, and mainly down in Sharon's district, that are just way, way far gone, like this one here. You know, they're, they're too far gone, they can't be fixed.
Well, why can't we start with those? Why can't we just go ahead and take those out, instead of waiting for two more people to come on board, who will probably agree? That's what I don't understand, because we have people that are moving into those homes, and I wish they'd come down one day and just see what's moving into the house.
I'm gonna step in and give you my opinion real quick. This is, I totally agree with cleaning up our city, dilapidated structures, you know, you guys have been doing a great job. We look at our action item tonight is, is for the commission to give direction on this. My personal opinion, you guys know where I stand. I, I wholeheartedly agree with cleaning it up, dilapidated structures, but for me, I will abstain from voting tonight because I, the item is to give direction from commission to this, this topic. So, I'm, that's just my personal gut, I'm gonna, I'm gonna sit back. I would agree with
It's your last meeting.
First meeting in January.
Yes.
Get this on the deal, and you guys give direction. I won't vote on it tonight because that's, that's, the item is to give direction. So.
That's all I'm saying, guys, I don't, I don't want to argue with you on it, I'm just saying.
I would, I would wholeheartedly agree with bringing it first meeting. We're already doing this right now, we've been, we've been condemning these structures. There's a couple on the items tonight that I may or may not vote on, but it's because it's something we've already got in motion, giving direction, moving forward. I'm, I'm good with abstaining, and that's probably what I'll do tonight on this one.
Thank you. Just a reminder, and just for those of you out there, when we condemn, or we, do we declare, how are we saying that, condemn it? If it's not boarded up, the homeowner actually has two years to make those repairs before anything is done, and two years is a long time. And I think it's very generous, actually, but that is the law. So, it's not like we condemn them, and then we go out the next day and tear them down. And we've had this discussion before, they have two years. I think two years is plenty of time to clean your property up. All it does is it gives us something to work with, right? And so, when we start, and I'm fine with the first week, or first meeting in January, I said that earlier, I don't, I don't mind as long as we're not kicking the can down the road. But all that does is ensure that the city has done something and that we can keep an eye on it, that we can, we have those checks and balances in place. I, I just, I cannot see anything wrong with that. I don't understand why that would be an issue. I, I think it just ensures that, that, you know, if we let it go, if we, if we have a piece of property and then we go, oh, okay, well, let's give them, let's revisit it in a year, well, we revisit it a year, or six months, or whatever it is, and they've done nothing, which almost always happens, almost always happens, then that's six more months that we've wasted. And I just, I don't, I guess I just don't see the problem with, with doing this, protecting, protecting our city and then giving them that two years to take care of it, so.
Do we have any upcoming demos on houses?
That are scheduled to be demoed? I actually meet on Thursday with a contractor to look at 1218 Post, which has been condemned.
Is that that burnt one?
Yeah.
And how much longer do they have before?
I've had no contact with, with anybody there, and there's no, the last address is 1218 Post, I can't find the phone number.
We just did that one earlier this year.
Yeah, it wasn't very long ago.
So, they, we still have two years before we can do anything?
No, not necess, it, it, so, by resolution, they have 10 days to commence. So, I take that as, hey, you've called the contractor, or you've called me and said, hey, it's gonna take me a little, Properties in Pro Bay, 310 North White Sands, to probate. And she called and talked to me and said, hey, I gotta, I gotta contact 16 different relatives, and I'll get them on the same, I'm like, okay, no problem, but you've called me and we're talking about it, take your time, let me know, just keep me, keep me informed. I get property owners when I send those letters that call, call me, I had one today. In fact, I was, I was late to my meeting with the city manager because I was on the phone with one today down in Maryland, hey, I want to buy this property from my uncle, can you come look at it? Absolutely. I had a dispensary, a dispensary going on in town, we're old now, but yes, Steph wanted me to come do an inspection, so I did an inspection, this is what you're gonna need to fix. So, we, I, our whole goal is to work with people.
Right, yeah.
Tearing things down is not where we want to go, but ultimately, that's the ultimate where we have to go sometimes. I can tell you that I have identified 62, as of today, 62 dilapidated structures in Alamo Gordo. The ones you've seen are the worst. I haven't even touched on, okay, these ones are, they're in ranks, 3, 2, 1. 3s are the worst, they have fires, they're 803 or Apo Ho's where they have a bunch of junk, or the Mountain View one that had all the cats. They're, they're the really bad ones. So, all these that I'm bringing to you are clear, definitive, these are dilapidated structures, and we ought to do something about it.
And I feel obligated to speak up now, even though this is my last meeting, dilapidated structures are probably the second most frequently called upon issue that I get, right behind weeds and roads. I know that the District 3, that this is an issue, and I do want them to have a voice here at the table, so I will be voting here. I think we need to address this today, but, you know, worst case, push it to the first meeting in January because even, even delaying it a month, it's just, we've been delaying this long enough. It's time, I think the people want action on this.
I think we're, at the moment, we're still, we're, I mean.
It's just for recommendations, correct?
Anything else is gonna stop, right? You're still gonna.
Yeah, we've still been business as usual, like we've been doing, but this is just.
I haven't brought forward any dilapidated structures in a while, tonight's my first one in a while, and that is because of the sheer condition of it.
But it's not gonna completely halt.
No, I have five more that I could bring, and which I plan to next month.
So, can we ensure that it's brought back the first meeting in January?
We can just make a motion to table it till January 9th, and then it'll come back automatically January 9th.
Okay, because I.
Is that their first meeting, January 9th?
We are gonna, we are voting later on whether to cancel the last meeting, assuming that that happens, the next meeting would not be until January 9th anyway, and I'm fine with that, I don't have a problem with that.
Just table it till the 9th, and then it'll automatically come back on the 9th.
Right, but I'm not willing to go any, any longer than the first meeting in January.
Rest assured, and do know that you already have, by virtue of your ordinances and by virtue of the property code, Josh and the inspectors are able to go out, they're not stopping
Right.
Doing their inspections and doing their job to identify these structures. But I think going forward, I think there are some very real issues because these are policy decisions that different commissions and councils around the country have different ideas about how it should work. But you do have those authorities already in place to continue. As a matter of fact, I did give Josh some authority today because there are some budgeted funds already available to destroy some of these properties that have gone through this lengthy process where nobody has done anything, nobody's willing to do anything, and they're properties that need to be demolished because they, they cannot be brought back up to any kind of a standard anytime soon. So, the problem that we have, as you always will have, is there's gonna be more properties that need to be demolished than you can spend money to tear down. While we have liens, and we would file those appropriately, you may or may never collect any money on those liens, so meanwhile, you're out money from our general operating fund to pay for those improvements to the, to the community. And it's, it's a difficult proposition. I know you've got a couple of very large buildings that are needing to be destroyed, but because of asbestos abatement and some of those things that are required, you could spend upwards to eight or nine years' worth of the normal allocated funds that you put out for some of these things, we wouldn't have any money left to do anything. So, I, and I appreciate, as a mayor and a commission, some outgoing, we have new ones coming in. Sure, it's probably a good opportunity to get that vision of that newly seated commission as to how they want Josh to move forward, so that we as a staff can, you know, actively do the things that, that you want done in this community. So, I gather in my short period of time here, this is not a new topic, it's not one that's got any new revolutionary ways to fix, but we do have the ability to continue on and identify these properties. And in fact, if we can get people to fix the ones that are so bad, that is the goal. We, the goal is not to tear down properties, but, but as several of you have already indicated, you've got people living next door, and these are primarily what I call abandoned structures. They're not, they're not homes that anybody lives in or would live in. They're, and I can assure you, the ones that I've been in and looked at here already, none of you would, would live in those homes or expect anybody to live in those. From plumbing, electrical, a lot of those are just accidents waiting to happen. So, we're gonna move forward from a staff standpoint, continuing to identify these, and if you choose to do so, we will bring this back in January. With regard to the fee structure and some of those things that Josh brought up, certainly there are some ordinances that would have to go along with those fees. We cannot arbitrarily set a fee structure because we've got to determine exactly by ordinance what fees we're gonna charge for various services, what we're gonna do in case somebody doesn't pay those fees, what are our legal options. So, there's a number of ordinance issues that we need to address also, as you consider these in January, if that's when you do so. Feel free to holler at me if you need to come by the office, we can sit and visit, whatever we need to do to clarify and arrive at an understanding, but somehow, you gotta be able to give Josh and his staff something to, to know what their goals and what their expectations are from the community. expectations are from the community's standpoint, as well as from the commissions, because you set the policies. We don't set the policies. We, we administrate the policies that you, you bring to us.
Right.
So thank you, and I'll be happy to help anyway.
Thank you. Okay, so we-
Let's make a motion to table this till January 9th.
Okay. So I have a motion from Commissioner Reardon to table this until January 9th. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
A second from Commissioner Burnett. All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? And we will table this until January 9th. Thank you. Thank you. I appreciate it.
No problem.
But don't go away.
I'm not.
Okay. We're going to move on to item 14. I do have three people signed up, but I'm going to let our code enforcement manager give us some information first, and then I will allow you to speak.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, Commissioners, City Manager Holden. I bring before you a property to consider act upon condemning tonight. This is 923 North New York Avenue, the Shroud Museum, at the corner of 10th Street and New York Avenue, catty corner from District Court. As you can see here, this is the front of the building in the picture on the left from New York. The picture on the right is where it is affixed on New York Avenue, at the corner of 10th and New York Avenue. The star indicates where it's at. Northbound is north, straight across the street is the, the pool hall. Again, laws and codes on dangerous buildings, unsafe structures and breeze, and of course, what the general International Property Maintenance Code says, this is typical for all the dilapidated structures that are brought before you. The timeline on this, on November 17th, I was, code enforcement has made aware of a potentially dilapidated structure. The property owners were contacted and considered to, to be inspected by code enforcement. On November 29th, inspection of the interior and exterior of the property was conducted, and on the, it actually didn't get delivered on 12-1. It was done 12-1, actually delivered it today to, to Ms. Connie over here, just because we were hit and miss. There was 47 violations of International Property Maintenance Code. Typically, I put here what they are. There's 47 violations from unsafe conditions, unsafe structure, unsafe equipment, structure unfit for human occupancy, unlawful structure, dangerous structure, responsibility to have the exterior in compliance with all the provisions, sanitation, rodent harborage, exhaust vents, defacement of property, which is graffiti. The exterior shall be in good repair, structurally sound and sanitary. Unsafe conditions, which would be exterior cracks in walls and the roofing components deteriorated, protective treatment, structural members, exterior walls, roofs and drainage, overhang extensions, chimneys and towers, window skylights and door frames, glazing doors, exterior doors. The general interior of the structure needs to be in good repair, structurally sound and sanitary condition. Unsafe conditions within the structure, interior surfaces within the structure, stairways and walking surfaces, interior doors. Generally, generally, the components of the structure and equipment maintained in good repair and structurally sound. Unsafe conditions of components within, which include masonry and wood, accumulation of rubbish and garbage, garbage, disposal of rubbish, infestation, the owner's responsibility for infestation, bathrooms and toilet rooms, plumbing fissure, plumbing fixtures kept free from obstructions, leaks and defects, and capable of performing the function which it was intended. Plumbing system hazards, residential occupancies, which goes into talking about heating within the building. There is no heat within the building other than a space heater. Mechanical equipment and appliances, that is going to deal with the gas water heater. Electrical system hazards, where there was several hazards from loose junction boxes and switches to fixtures being hung, that are hanging on by wires and other light switch junction boxes that were just hanging by wiring with no conduit. The installation of the electrical appliances, receptacles, there was some receptacles that don't have faceplates or need faceplates. Luminaries, need lights in certain areas and common hallways and stairways. The wiring, there's, there was an extension cord and ran through a cabinet. The duct system, there isn't one because there's no heating. And then safe, continuous and obstruction path of travel to an egress point are all of 47 in a nutshell. The condition of the property at 923 New York Avenue, when we did the inspection, as you can see on the left, it's kind of hard to see, but there is some deterioration to the siding, which you can see more on the right-hand picture with the masonry gone and just the deterioration of the wood underlayment from just years of wear and tear, as well as window skylights and door frames. That, that window frame, all, there is no glass, so it's emitting rainwater and elements into the interior of that structure. This is in the back, that drain vent there on the left-hand picture has a large hole in it, which is one of the violations, exhaust vents. The foundation cracking, you can see that horizontal crack. The picture on the right is a structural beam, it's a metal beam that has been so corroded that it really doesn't hold anything anymore. Picture on the left is, is where that vent pipe is and those structural beams are. Picture on the right, on the right is a picture of a structural beam within that. That beam is actually supporting the second floor, and that beam has been, because of the, of the amount of, of elements and rain, it has compressed in on itself and twisted to where these walls, what you're looking at, that looks like it's metal and in the opening, is actually a wall on the first floor. That wall and the wall above that on the second floor are, are starting to compound on each other, that they're convexing out, that they're, they're protruding out, meaning that the middle of this building is falling in.
Is this on the addition part of it, or is this on the actual main structure?
Actual main structure.
That's the actual main structure?
Mm-hmm. This is actually where this structural member is. If you go through the museum, there's another door and you hang a left, it's right there. Again, another picture of that, of that structural, pictures of that structural member, because none of, none of the, the structures, the properties that I've brought to you so far have kept me up at night. This one has, since I've been in it. With as much traffic as that neighborhood has, this one has kept me up at night with its location, of the potential of collapse is very real with this structure. The flooring and flooring components, you can see Ms. Connie there lifting up the flooring. Again, another picture of that structural member, that, that thing scares, it very, very much scares me, to the point where we were not walking underneath it. And there were several of us in there, including fire, even our city manager went into this structure with us. This is a picture of the second floor. There is nothing left of the second floor. It is down to pretty much studs and the old wood wall, walling. But it, it's all on the floor. Where this, this right-hand picture, where that pile is, is actually right above where that foundation, that beam, structural beam is. So all of the wo, all of the wall wood and debris from all the walls, that is a big pile, weighing hundreds of pounds on that flooring. Being on that, on that second floor, you could see the dip from a window to the middle of about a foot displacement, from where the window is to where you are on this. And I was over there looking at it. It is definitely sinking in the middle. This is just another picture of the deterioration within the, the second floor of this. The right-hand shows, that's the addition. That's going to be part of the addition, that right-hand side. But that's what you can see from that park right behind. You can see a lot of this deterioration, dilapidation from that park right behind this building at 10th and White Sands. Again, roofing components, you can see the majority of the roof is, well, not the majority of the roof. Roof elements, roof components are on this, this small roof from the main roof. And then you can see the siding of that building. You can see the park right behind where, where this structure is. What I'll do is stand for any questions. I am certified property maintenance and housing inspector through International Code Council. I'm a certified zoning inspector through Animal, through International Code Council. I'm a certified code officer, a code official safety specialist, and I am a certified through American Association of Code Enforcement and International Code Council code enforcement officer. I have those four certifications I've gotten this last month. If you have any questions, I will stand for them now.
And then also, before I let public comment, I think Assistant City Manager Hernandez had some information.
So I know this was a hard one to digest. We went into this building, and when I say we, it wasn't me. Along, when Brian Patrilla, it was, what year was it?
Two or three years ago.
Yeah, it, well, it's, it's, I think 19 is correct. So it's gotten significantly worse since 2019. Fire pulled up the pictures, and it's gotten significantly worse. I'm the one who brought this to Josh's attention, because I would like you all to consider a few things when, when voting on this item. We, the more you know, the more you know. And I figured if anything bad was going to happen, it was going to happen this year, because it's kind of been that kind of year. We were working with fire to try and change ordinances, side setbacks, all of that. That's where I started really thinking about, if something happens to this building, entire, that side of the main street, it's, there's nothing that separates, all those shafts are going to go down. The second thing that I really became a huge concern of mine is, we are going to start the great blocks, the structural integrity of this building. And with the, when they start drilling, I mean, tearing up the streets, drilling for the infrastructure underneath, I'm afraid of the imploding on this and potentially something that could happen with any one of our construction people, or maybe just someone there. I did speak with Nolan about this, because I know this is in his area. This is something that, you know, he is going to have to deal with the repercussions of it. He's willing to work with the owners of it if there's anything that can be done. Now, we're not trying to tear this down. My opinion, it might go down that road, but we really do need to secure it, especially before we get our great blocks program going up and running. So that's why I brought this to Josh. It was me who initiated it. So just, you know, hold this goes around that one. So I'll stand for questions as well, if you have any.
What are the intentions, then, of the, of it?
So with-
If you don't want to tear it down, if that's the last-
It's, it's, so it's not my decision to tear it down. It's one of those, it's one of those that we will try and work with, just kind of the same process that anything else that's going with. I don't know if Nolan has any additional resources that he can help with. Basically, I needed, I want it to be structurally sound by the time we go into the great blocks project, because if going in there, I, it was a pretty, pretty scary site. I, I wasn't comfortable at all. We had, like he said, everybody was out there. And we spoke to, I guess, the occupants of the building as well. And I feel, there's some safety concern that they have as well, and I believe they're here, so.
The owners is here, did I? Are they? Okay.
Okay. So you say you want it secured, another, but you want the, you're saying you want the owner to do something to secure it?
Something needs to be done with the building.
Right.
Yes.
So not the city, it would be the owner. So from the city's standpoint, if the owner doesn't, is unwilling to do something or cannot do something, what would be our alternative? To tear it down?
Based on all the training and everything I've been through, it, I don't see it a matter of if it comes down, it's when. And it being on this block with the amount of pedestrian traffic, as well as modus traffic, and the patrons, all the other businesses in that block, you're looking at a total catastrophe of not great bodily injury, but how many deaths are going to occur when this building comes down?
And that can be, how do I say this, effectively done without, without-
affecting the other buildings?
Touching the other building? I don't know how you say that. Without, can't, I mean, how does that, because they're all attached. We know that, so.
It's going to be up to the contractor, or whoever, whichever contractor is, is looking at that for, for demo. But I, I, this is one that I don't often go into and say, we need to, but this is one, like I've said, I've had sleepless nights about this one of not if, but not if it will fall, it's when it's going to fall.
When, no, I get you.
And how it hasn't fallen yet. And just the sheer location of it is what's frightening to me, and the amount of deaths, because you have District Court staff that use that Hunter block to get to Walgreens all the time.
Right.
So not to mention all the patrons that were just there this last weekend.
Okay. So why don't we do this? Why don't we hear from the three people we have signed up to speak on this? The first one is Louis, and you'll have to, yep. And if you can come up to the microphone, state your name. You will have three minutes. And, yeah, I can only give you three minutes.
All right.
Okay, thank you.
My name is Louis Boskis, and I looked at that building. It's a historical building, and is made back when Elm Gordo was just starting. I looked at the walls on the outside, and they looked pretty good. It's the inside structural, because back in those days, all they did was, they didn't have concrete, so they did wooden floors for everything, which gave them access to plumbing, electrical and such things like that. But the building is historical, and it was beautiful when it was made back in those days. The only thing is, they let the roof go. They didn't care for the roof, so it started damage from the top down, just showered in there. So I think that we ought to just get some people knowledgeable about repair and rebuild it, the inside only, leaving the outside wall, which is what makes it look historical, you know. So.
You're not the owner, though?
No, I'm not the owner.
Okay.
But I just was asked to talk about it here.
Okay.
And so, it would have to be checked by some professionals, go in there and check it, before anybody makes any decision on it.
Okay.
That's all I got to say about it.
All right. Thank you, sir. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
So when this property did come to my attention from then Acting City Manager Hernandez, now Assistant City Manager Hernandez, historical is one thing I looked into. I looked at code, I looked on the national registry, I looked on the state registry. It is not registered as a historic building nationally or in the state, so it does not fall under any historical codes. And even then, codes say it has to be maintained to code. So whether it is a historical or it is not, it's not, because it's not on any registry. Maybe historical the Elm Gordo, but it's not a historic building as it needs to be. So, and like I said, even if it did, per code, on any of them, I'm certified in property maintenance code, residential code and zoning code, all of them say, it's got to be maintained to code.
Okay. Thank you.
I think it would be very important to understand that the goal is not to remove or tear that building down in any way. I do think it's important to also understand that we would want to give the owner, owners, agents, whoever's got some association with that building, the opportunities to have it checked out from a structural integrity standpoint, through an architectural engineer that's certified to do that, because contrary to the one comment I did hear, that one of those outside walls for sure is already bowed out. And it's not a matter of, of if that's going to fall, it, it will if something's not done to it. My point is, I believe the appropriate people can come in and assist these fine folks that have an interest in that building, and find out what they've got to do to bring that building up to meet those minimum codes, so that it can become part of that history that's downtown. As Josh said, it's not a historical building, it's an old building that needs to be restored.
Right. But that would be up to the owner to do that.
Absolutely. And we're not an advocate of, of us going in there and trying to bring it up to standards ourselves, or, or even demolish it until somebody can categorically say, hey, we can't afford to bring this building up to the, to the code and to make it safe. As it sits right now, it is a very dangerous building in your downtown area.
Okay. So let me, I have two more people here to speak. Before I do, can I ask if the owner of the building is here?
We're, it's owned by a nonprofit.
Okay.
The Shroud, and so the board-
Okay.
Is it, it's not any one person?
Okay. So are you Connie?
Yes, I am.
Okay. I do have Pete next. Do you want to go before? Do you mind if Connie goes first?
Connie will go first.
Okay. Connie, I'll have you go first. And you will have three minutes.
My name is Connie Garcia, and at the moment, I'm the president of the board, which is why I'm the one that showed them the building. I do want to let you know that the building became deteriorated when we were not the owners. The owners were Pedro and Rosie Montoya. They owned the building, and they gifted it to us like three years ago, and it was already in bad shape. And so we knew the roof was leaking. I have photographs where I had people put like that whitewash, so it would stop leaking, but with the strong winds, it has blown the, the roofing paper off with- but with the strong winds, it has blown the roofing paper off with the stuff that was waterproof. I also want to let you know that we have been trying to raise money to redo the roof. And we figured that was the first thing that we needed to do. We also know that we need to put heating and cooling in there. We have a proposal from Anderson that was going to do one. We also have a proposal from a roofing company, Bishop from Los Cruces. And we have been trying to save money to build, to redo the roof. And so we had figured we were gonna do the roof and then we're gonna do the heating and cooling. And Anderson was gonna bring in their own electrical stuff. When we started to tear down the walls, we, what they saw, they saw because we took it down. We took down the ceiling panel, we took down the middle wall, we were gonna rebuild it. When we saw that that was twisted, and I called in the board, I said, we have to have an emergency meeting because we didn't know that that was underneath the sheet rock where the board was twisted. We did know that we, we were in the process of, we have boards that we've painted to look like windows with people looking out saying, what is it, where'd it come from, and we're gonna put them up. But we wanted to put them all up when we got all our building material up there because we don't make a lot of money. We bring thousands and thousands of people to Al Magordo that come here to see just the shroud. And we know that because they access us through web, through our webpage. And unfortunately, our webpage guy couldn't make it tonight. And then they come here just to see the Shroud of Turin. But we don't make a lot of money. We make somewhere from a hundred to maybe $300 a week. It's enough to keep us in business, keep our utilities going. And like I said, we did have a plan to fix the roof, the heating and cooling. The next thing was gonna be the floor, then, then we were gonna deal with the interior walls. The area that we use is in great shape. It was when we tore down walls in the back where we discovered this other stuff. And the roof has always been an issue. And we've only been owners of the building for about three years, that's it. And we tried it, started to do things to make it better. We didn't know about all the stuff that we uncovered when we knocked down the walls in the middle. And we knocked them down to put up new ones when codes came in and got to see the things we had purposely knocked down ourselves already. Okay?
Thank you.
All right.
And then, so just so we're clear, it's a nonprofit that owns the building now?
Yes. And it was gifted to us.
Okay.
And it was gifted to us in that bad shape. We were not, we were told that that center wall-
Right.
Was not a low bearing wall and stuff like-
How do you feel when you're in the building? Do you feel safe?
I felt safe. I felt safe all the time until I saw that twisted board.
Okay.
And then we called in this building man and he said, all that can be replaced. But with the timing that you guys have, you know, I don't know how all this is gonna go over with you guys tearing up the floor, the road and stuff. But we had intended to restore it and we weren't ignoring the damage.
All right. Thank you. Okay, I have one more person signed up, Peter Shoemaker, Schumacher?
Schumacher.
Schumacher. I do know you. I know who you are. I'm sorry.
That's all right. Mayor, commission people, thank you very much for giving us some time. Sometimes, you know, I got some free advice once and it was worth it. We got a free building once and it might have been worth it too. Yeah, there are situations with that building that need to be addressed. And I think most of them can be addressed and it is gonna take an investment. And for us to come up with an investment over a period of time is gonna be very difficult. We're gonna, Connie's very good at working for, trying to get grants and things like that, but those things take time. The timeline that we have in the report that was given to us by Josh looks really kind of awesome. Thirty days for this and fifteen days for that. And, you know, that's, those are not possible things to do. And I'm sure that Josh will work with us some on that, or at least I certainly hope he will. I'm not on the board of directors anymore. I founded the museum fifteen years ago. We have brought tens of thousands of people to Al Magordo over that period of time to do research on the Shroud of Turin. There's a connection between the history of New Mexico and the history of the Shroud of Turin. It's part of the largest scientific investigation ever launched to study a single artifact. And that began in New Mexico because of a discovery at Sandia Laboratories in Albuquerque. So it's a big part of New Mexico history, it's a big part of our community in terms of what it brings in here for dollars. We have people that travel from Florida, from Panama, Central America, from Italy even, and from France even. And we have people from Canada and other places. And sometimes they come and spend weeks at a time helping us out and also doing research because we have a research capability on the Shroud of Turin in that museum. So it's a very important asset to this community. And my purpose here today is to try to make sure that that continues, okay? Whether it's in that building or another building, but we need time and we need patience. And we need help finding resources of funding and whatever else. So we need to make time, have time to make pleas to the community and pleas to those who would, might, might provide assets in cash that we might use to get this job done. Thank you.
Thank you. Can I ask Connie one more question, if you'll come up? Just because I'm curious. I'm a curious person by nature, but I'm curious. Is that building insured?
Yes.
So you do have an insurance company that insures the building?
Well, I don't think it insures the building. I think we have a liability, like it ensures liability if people get hurt there, but the building itself is not insured. We have liability insurance and it ensures their patrons that visit there and it ensures the, the property that we have in there.
Okay. So if, if someone comes in and, Lord forbid, that building comes crashing down and kills somebody, are you guys insured?
The liability would cover our patrons, the liability insurance. The building, if the building catches fire, it will not pay for the building.
Okay.
The insurance that we have ensures our patrons and our property.
Okay. So now you bring up another point. If, and I'm just asking because I, to me, this kind of thing is important. If somebody's in your building and that building has an electrical problem or catches fire and then it jumps over to the next building and causes a fire, are you insured for that?
I am not sure about that.
Okay.
Yeah, I can look it up.
If you, if someone is in your building and, because that building is attached to another building and that building comes crashing down and kills somebody in your building and in the process destroys the building next door or somebody on the street, 'cause that's a very real possibility, are you insured for that?
I don't think we are. We are insured for the patrons and the property in the building. That's what our insurance covers.
So I will just tell you, for me, that is a huge concern. I am, I am somebody who's probably overinsured on everything in my life. And I also run a nonprofit and we're probably overinsured there too. But it is critically important that everybody is protected. So that is, that's why I'm asking the question. It's clearly not on the city, although I would suggest if that's, if that building came down and injured somebody on the sidewalk, we'd probably see a lawsuit because that's just how people are. And you don't have any control over that part. But I, I think it's critically important that you find out if you're insured. If, because from what I'm hearing, and I know that there's different feelings, but it seems to me like that's a huge liability. And if that happens as a board of directors, you need to make sure you, I mean, I don't wanna give you all this advice, other than you should have directors and operators insurance. You should have all this insurance and it doesn't sound like you do. And that's a huge concern for me as the mayor because I don't want our citizens to get hurt and I don't want them to have zero recourse if they do get hurt. Okay, thank you.
So I just wanted to bring up, so now that the city, we've known and we know when we start the great block, and this is purely where I'm coming from, when we start the great blocks and that building falls down, then the city is now responsible for that building. So we need to keep all this in perspective. I know the historic and the sentimental value is there and I agree, I think it's, it would be a shame, but we also have to protect the city, the liability of it. And so this is 100% where all this is coming from. We really need to be careful and take a look at that because the city will get sued if something happens, if falls on the street, because we're named in everything that happens, apparently.
When are we starting that?
The great blocks, I-
January? Is it January?
I thought it was gonna be in March.
Oh, maybe March.
But Nolan has, Nolan is here.
So we've got a couple of months before this will all start?
Yes. But passing the resolution ensures that they will continue to make progress on this. And that's where the city needs to protect ourselves to say, oh, we, we know. And I'm not saying that they won't, I'm saying that we really need to be careful because this is gonna be a huge liability on the city. Nolan, if you need him to speak, he has other options that he could present, but I don't know if that's something you'd like, so.
And I would say, I agree with Steph too. I mean, if, if, when this build, if it comes down and someone's killed or severely injured, not only are we gonna be named in the laws, but we are going to be held liable if we do not take any action.
Especially now that we know about it.
Especially, yes. Now that we know, then we know the severity of it, we will be liable. We won't be, are we gonna be 100% liable? No, but we will be held liable.
Let's face it, they're always gonna sue the city, so I'm just saying. And, but, you know, beyond that, I don't wanna, I don't wanna just look at it from, from that standpoint. I'm concerned about human life and, and if it's that dangerous, then we need to take a good look at that, so.
I'd just like to ask Connie a couple of questions.
Okay. Would you like to come back up, Connie?
I beg your pardon?
Would you like to come back up for just a moment, Commissioner?
Oh.
Burnett has a question for you.
Have you spoken to any contractors to come in?
I have spoken-
An estimated cost?
Not, well, because we didn't know about that wall that was twisted till we removed the, the sheet rock. We have had a roofer in there, we have, we have a proposal from him. We've had heating and cooling people in there, we have a proposal from them. But as far as that center wall, we weren't aware of it. Like, they contacted us, like, we knocked it down like the fifteenth and the seventeenth. They contacted us, they were coming. And when we saw that twisted wall, we had a meeting and the board decided that we weren't gonna cover it up because it is a liability. And if we covered it up and we didn't let code see it and then something happened, that would be worse.
What was your estimate for the roof, do you know?
For the roof, it was like $55,000, yeah. And the heating and cooling was $12,000.
That's actually not bad.
Yeah.
Fifty-five thousand?
Well, when you only make $300 a week, it's-
Okay, but-
And, and we've only, we've only been the owners of the building.
I'm just saying in general, you have to look at it.
No, I'm just saying that $55,000 to fix that roof is not bad.
We were not collecting money to fix the roof because the building was not ours. We were just being loaned that one room. And that's the reason why they found it the way it was because the person that gave us the building did not vacate the building. We had to like literally pressure them to come and vacate the building a piece at a time. And when codes was coming out, he barely took stuff out that day. I even told them, the barber shop was a mess. Where he came and took the good stuff that he wanted and left his trash there. We did not have access into the barber shop until the day he took his stuff. But he had, he had actually put the building in our name like three years ago, but he didn't vacate it. So we didn't have access to a lot of the stuff to see what it was like or anything. And so the rubbish that he's talking about is on the second floor and on the barber shop. Because what we could access, we cleaned. I personally cleaned and bleached a lot of stuff myself, but, you know, that's like, yeah.
Thank you. Anybody else have any questions? Did you, oh.
I'm just here to ask you to consider this resolution for condemnation of this building and prohibit its occupancy.
Okay. So if we, if we do this, then what would be the next step? It would have-
Honestly, guys, we, we should give them thirty days to get with a contractor to come in and look at this thing and give them an actual opinion on the structural integrity of that building. Because the building's been standing there 122 years. I don't see it coming down tomorrow.
Anything could happen in thirty days.
Anything can happen. An airplane could crash through this building right now and kill us all. Anything can happen. It's been 122 years that building stood there. If we condemn this, what's to say tomorrow morning their insurance company cancels their policy? Okay, that's, if we gave them-
But they don't have insurance. They just have a liability policy.
They have a liability for the use of that floor of that building.
So they're not gonna cancel it because they have no building insurance.
I think we oughta give, and this is my personal opinion, give them thirty days to get ahold of a contractor, whoever it may be, to come in and assess the damage that, that they exposed up on that second floor. You know, I'm surprised that if it's as bad as you say it is, that that roofer would even give them a bid to get up on that roof and do that roof. So we should give them the opportunity to fix their building, not just declare it dilapidated. In thirty days or forty-five days from now, if they haven't done anything, then yes, we should. But this one's gonna create some issues because it is so old, it is in the downtown district. We've got a little bit of time before the great blocks start. Give them a little bit of time to get an opinion from a contractor.
Okay. Josh, do you have something? I'm sorry, go ahead.
So should resolution be passed, they would have ten days to commence demolition or rehabilitation. So within ten days, they can call a contractor. And then once they have called one contractor in the next ten days, that is satisfied their ten day mark. Now they have two years. So they still get, they still get their thirty days. They still get their, they get more than thirty, they get two years. They just have to call a contractor within the next ten days.
So the liability doesn't expire on us if they get to the two-year mark, you know what I mean?
Yeah, at the, at the two-year mark, if they have not-
We're worried about the city's liability because we know of the issue. But if they call a contractor within ten days, he comes in and assesses it, they've fulfilled what they need to do. Now they got two years.
For the ten day mark, yeah.
'Cause he's talking about the liability. So because the city has done action, we have a defense then. Because we took action, and yes, legally and statutorily, like the state statute says, we have to give two years. But at least we did the action, so that does limit our liability and makes it less because we have a defense. We can say the city, as soon as it, as soon as we found out how bad it was, we took action and we were following state statute as to, you know, the process. So yes, if we take action, then our liability goes down. If commission decides not to take action or denies it, our liability goes up, really.
Even though it's private property?
Even though it's private property because we knew how bad it is and we do have a duty to the citizens, we have a duty to the public.
Just random statement from my end. I had had a meeting this past week with somebody local in this community that really appreciates the architecture of that building and is somebody that would love to see it remain in the community. So I don't know to the board members that are here that if you guys have any interest regardless of how the commission votes on this, if it's worthwhile, I could get you in contact with that person. I don't know if you guys would have any interest in renting a space from them, but they would, they have the means and the ability to come in and restore that potentially in a short period of time. But just wanted to let you know if you'll be around after the meeting and get that contact info, so.
Okay.
I feel that's a better option.
So if we, if we do this tonight, you get with that person in ten days, you get with a contractor, whatever, in ten days, then that satisfies the ten days and then you have two years?
Yeah. I mean, I would move to, move forward with this.
So let me, I just have one more question. So if we condemn it, do they have to leave the building?
They cannot occupy that, that space unless they are there to correct the violations.
So their museum goes away?
Its occupancy is prohibited.
May I? I believe you said that-
I, sir, I can't, I can't, I can't, not from there. If you wanna come back up here, I'll go ahead and let you.
Thank you. Thank you. I guess the question would go to Nick. You said that they perhaps might have something that we might be able to move the museum into while they're doing whatever they're doing? This person, maybe?
Yeah, I mean, you'd have to have a conversation with them. I know that they have, very much have an interest in that building for a venture that they're looking to do and that they're already a part of. So I don't know whether that would entail being able to stay there or not. That'd have to be a conversation that you could have between that, you and themself, you and them. But happy to get you in contact- But happy to get you in contact with them and you guys can have that discussion, you know.
And I believe there would probably be some concern if the building was already condemned, but it's for occupancy to repair, so that's not a major issue.
Correct.
Thank you very much, Nick.
Yes, sir.
And so I just, I did want to make this point. You know, because you guys were talking about, you know, if we condemn it, they cannot occupy it. That is per statute. And the reason behind that, of course, is to limit liability. Because if something is, you know, especially this bad, it's a way for the government to try to limit liability as much as it physically can. You know, by taking people out of that building in case something was to happen. It's another defense for us, you know, if something was to happen. We can say we did everything we could. We tried to limit people being in there, you know, so on and so forth. So I did want to just put down the whole, the whole reason for this condemning stuff. You know, the thought process behind it when legislatures at the state level was thinking this out.
Okay, so here's my issue. My issue is there, there is no insurance on this building. I understand that you have liability insurance, but the liability insurance only counts if someone trips in your building and falls or, you know, whatever, right? I mean, it doesn't, you have no insurance on the building. And so I go back to a scenario where if this building crashes down and somebody's walking on the sidewalk and they get killed, the only people that they have to go back on are the city of Alamo Gordo because you don't have anything. And that, to me, is terrifying because that could be millions of dollars. Especially if we know about it. Now that, you know, we're on public record here, right? We know about this. I understand the position that you're in. I get it. I just, I'm in a, I'm in a real quandary over this because, well, I'm really not in a quandary. I, I mean, I, I feel bad about it, but I think the liability is just too great for our city. I just really do and for our citizens and.
You know, honestly, we've known about this since 2019.
Well, I haven't really known that much about it, not until I, not until I just, no. I mean, I certainly didn't know that they didn't have insurance. I had no clue.
She said she may have the insurance on that. She wasn't 100% sure, certain, so.
I, I can't believe anybody would insure that building. I just can't. I can't believe anybody would insure that building. They would have to come out, they would have to take pictures, they would have to inspect it. I just, it's why I asked the question because it was hard for us to believe that anybody would insure that building.
I would like to explore that avenue, like Commissioner Paul mentioned, if they have an investor that's willing to, to help out or, or purchase the building and renovate it.
They could do that while we pass this.
Yeah, so I'd like to make a motion to approve item 14.
I'll second.
Okay, I have a motion from Commissioner Paul to approve item 14. And I have a second from Commissioner Melton. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Carl Melton?
Aye.
Nick Paul?
Aye.
Stephen Burnett?
As much as I hate to, I'm going to say aye.
Josh Riordan?
I'm a no.
Sharon McDonald?
Aye.
Dusty Wright?
I agree with this one too. It needs to be cleaned up, so aye.
Susan Payne?
Aye. Motion passes six, one.
Shut down small business.
We are going to move on to item 15. Consider an act upon canceling the December 19, 2023 regular commission meeting. Typically, we do this every year. It's the last meeting of the year. You know, we flip off our meetings in November and December and typically, and I, and I will say that normally it's later than it is than this December 19 timeframe. But I brought it forward because that's what we typically do. So does anybody have any thoughts on that? Any comment? Okay. Do I have a motion to approve item 15?
So move.
Second. A motion from Commissioner Burnett, a second from Commissioner McDonald. Did we lose somebody?
Josh.
Should we wait?
All right, just call the vote personally.
Okay. All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye, all those opposed? And motion passes six, zero? I don't.
One absent.
Yeah. Yeah.
I believe so, six, zero, one.
I think we can just let the record reflect that Commissioner Riordan stepped out of the room. I hope he left or where he went.
No, he just went to the restroom.
Okay. Alrighty. We're going to move on to item 16. Just when I thought we were done. Okay.
Madam Mayor, did we want to take like a five-minute break? Because I see we have another commissioner that just left.
Yeah, I need to use restroom.
Uh, yes. Oh, yes, yeah. Yeah, look, it's quarter to nine. Okay.
We had the shortest meeting last week ever.
I know.
The longest.
It's true. He said I had the shortest meeting last time ever. That was true. I beat your record. Okay, we are going to take a five-minute break and we will resume at, uh, let's just say, well, let's do a little more. Let's do 9:55. I'm sorry, 8:55. 8:55, I'm sorry. We're going to resume at 8:55. Do I need to do that? Yes. Okay. We're going to go ahead and get started again. We are moving on to item 16. Consider an act upon ordinance 1687 for first publication amending chapter 11, article 7, section 010-060 of the alcohol beverage regulations. And Ashley Smith, our city attorney, has some information on that.
I have very little information because this was actually Chief Cudaharrows.
Is your mic on?
I got dumped on. So we used to have this ordinance.
My apologies, Ashley, your microphone's off.
Why'd you turn it off?
Accident.
It's orange.
Why not?
I know.
Speak loud. Are we good now?
Okay. So, Madam Mayor, Mayor for town commissioners, we had this ordinance on the books under the permits and business licenses. We actually, I believe we struck that ordinance sometime last year. And we're actually bringing it back, but we're bringing only parts of it back under the criminal code because we felt that it was more appropriate under the criminal code for the alcohol, the selling to minors parts. And if there's any other questions, I can try to answer them.
Anybody have any questions?
A question under that 11720, the location regulations. You know, it, it actually states public dance halls, poolrooms, bowling alleys. Is that going to affect us when we get ours back up and running? Are we allowed to sell alcohol in our own facilities?
Not to minors.
But that's not for minors, that's just under the location regulations. You know, and the same thing with our golf course. Are we going to limit ourselves to whether we can sell alcohol? Because that's a public space as well.
So location regulations actually has a, it says except public places having the licenses.
Oh, okay. Where does it say that?
At the very end of that section.
Except establishments or other public places having a license to dispense. Okay. Just want to make sure we're not limiting ourselves on that. And then, uh, sorry. The temporary alcohol, what is, what is, we're striking that, striking that out total?
So that used to be under Rachel.
So what happened is in our effort to clean up the ordinances, this was actually in Rachel's tempor, the business and license regulations. So we are trying to get everything aligned to put it into the appropriate place. So this actually belongs in the criminal code so that APD can't enforce it. We, I don't believe we do temporary alcoholic beverage dispens licenses anymore.
Dylan, can you confirm that?
I can confirm that. We no longer do temporaries.
Yep.
And then, isn't it already in state law about the minor allowing himself to be served? The selling or giving of alcohol?
Yes, it is.
So why do we need to, you can already cite it into court, right, under state law?
Yes, so we can cite it under municipal court.
So we'll send them to our court instead of to magistrate court?
Magistrate court, we have to, officers have to do self-prosecution. And if we cite it here locally, we have a counsel that can help us through the process and have better conviction rates and things like that.
Do they have a higher penalty through us than they will magistrate?
It's the same.
It's the same?
Same.
And the ordinance, because we cannot, our municipal court only does ordinances, city ordinances. We only enforce city ordinances. We can't really enforce state statutes and state statutes. And state statutes have to go to either magistrate or district court, depending on the level. But yeah, the are, the state and the municipal would be equivalent. There's no higher punishment.
So, under the temporary, like, when Bill does stuff for the Flickinger Center, that's a temporary, because he's, is that just gonna be allowed through the state now and not the city? Or?
Dylan, can you probably better explain that process?
Sorry.
Sure, I can explain that a little bit better. So, the way it works right now is that the city clerk's office does not do any sort of temporaries. What we do see come through is the public celebration permits. And regarding that, that paperwork goes to the state, but what they need from us can be one of two things. It can be local governing body approval, that one is required, it's definitely usually signed for that. And, oh, my mistake, that's one that our department signs up for. The other one is approval of property owner, and that's someone that Stephanie in the past signed for. But we don't keep a copy of that, we just take a look at the paperwork and move it forward with the state. Well, we give it to them to move forward with the state, we don't do that on their behalf.
This was one of those things, I don't know, I believe it was the balloon fest, and I think the mayor can probably attest to it, that there was a lot of holdup. Because they weren't able to get our temporary liquor license from us, and it has to be in two weeks. And then there's still the two weeks that CID had to, do you remember the whole? I don't know who remembers that whole debacle, but this was, we took that out because the state already regulates it. So, that's why we removed the temporary license from ours.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
That makes sense, though.
Yes, I do remember that. Anybody else have any questions?
It's like our Fourth Fridays, all of that are gonna be exempt because we have a license.
We have the liquor license.
Okay, because it does have anywhere public places.
So, we have our liquor license in that establishment on the backfield of Grigsfield.
Yeah, so, any establishment that has a liquor license is gonna be exempt. This is basically for people drinking in Walmart, parking lots, in parking lots, at liquor, liquor establishment, liquor establishments, things like that. But every place that has a liquor.
Any of the organized events should be exempt?
Those should be covered.
Okay.
Any more questions? Okay, do I have a motion to approve item sixteen?
So moved.
Okay. A motion from Commissioner Burnett, sorry, I was looking to see if this was a roll call.
And I'll second.
A second from Commissioner McDonald. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Carl Melton?
Aye.
Nick Paul?
Aye.
Stephen Burnett?
Aye.
Josh Rudin?
Aye.
Sharon McDonald?
Aye.
Dusty Wright?
Aye.
Susan Payne?
Aye. Motion passes seven zero. We are gonna move on to item seventeen. Gosh, we have a lot of items tonight, don't we? Okay. We're lucky, we usually get to like eight or something, okay. Consider an Act upon Ordinance sixteen eighty-six for first publication amending chapter eleven, article eight, section zero one zero dash zero four zero, peddler and solicitor regulations. And Ashley, you're up.
This is another one that was thrown on me from Chief Cunaharo, so. I'm gonna get him back when he comes back. This is another one, just like the previous one, where this used to be under, I guess, article?
Under Rachel, yeah.
Yeah, it was under Rachel, and again, we're moving it to the criminal code, because we feel it better fits under the criminal code so that our police officers can enforce it.
And this is for the people that are standing on the side of the roads?
Correct.
Or going door to door.
The door to door.
Yeah, I'm glad to see this back, because I was never in favor of getting rid of it, other than it probably shouldn't have been under Rachel, but I get, I actually get quite a few calls about this too, so. Anybody else have any questions?
Registered businesses can still go door to door, like the solar people, right?
Those are the ones I have the biggest problem with, the solar guys are aggressive.
Yeah, but they.
They'll come to my door and I'll tell them, hey, I'm not interested, and then it is a rebuttal after rebuttal after rebuttal. It's like, look dude, get the hell off my property.
I know, I get it, they annoy me too, but they have a right to make a living.
They do, but once you tell them, hey, you know what, I'm not interested, thank you.
So, this is one of those that if you have it posted, no trespassing, no soliciting, no anything like that, that you, they cannot go onto your property. And that allows them to also give APD a call to get them taken out, to get them removed from their property. One of the biggest complaints we get is actually the solar companies.
But they can still knock on other doors that do not have no soliciting.
Yeah, so, the reason this was in Rachel's was because we require them to have a solicitation, solicitation permit. So, we also took that away, the solicitation permit, we don't have to have that. I'm reading through it real quick, because this, this actually came out of Rachel's code, I think, prior to Denton. So, this was probably in March when we started cleaning these up, so it's, I'm trying to read it. I don't think this allows for them to do that.
So, what about Girl Scouts, Boy Scouts, anyone going door to door selling something?
Juveniles, I think, are exempt from this.
I just, I don't like taking away someone's meaning to provide for themselves.
I mean, I understand the aggressive part of the solicitation, but I agree with you. You know, or even the young kids selling the candy bars for school, or.
I believe that the juveniles are exempt from this, if I remember correctly, I'm trying to find it in here, but.
What section is that?
But to answer the first question, peddlers shall not include persons exempt from licensing under section seven twenty-three dash one of NMSA. I'm not sure if that's the business, if that's the business licensing. Like I said, this has been so long ago that we spoke about this, I'm having trouble remembering it.
What's, what's the, that's because of the state deals?
Lemonade stands. Kids can do lemonade stands because they're exempt from.
But why is it in our ordinance?
So, it seems to have like guidelines, so like, I mean, the first part, the prohibit, the very beginning, zero two zero, you know, it's, solicitation is prohibited as follows. Aggressive manner in a public area, you know, within fifteen feet of an entrance or exit of a bank. So, it sets parameters, looks like to me when I'm, as I'm taking a quick look at this again.
This also doesn't allow, this, we need to put this back in, because this also, when we have like the protest or any of the peddlers, that this gives APD the, this is the obstruction of, of traffic flow, or? Is that what the?
Section thirty.
Yeah. So, the, this is the one that right now, there's no authority for them to, if there's someone outside of Walmart and they step into our street, we really can't, don't have that ordinance on the books that says you're obstructing any traffic flow. So, there's really no ticketing or anything that can give that, or even just have them get off of the street.
Also, people posting up in medians. Like, we had some protesters over there.
Ten Street.
At Ten Street, in the medians.
The section that we're talking about with the minors is at seventeen oh eight oh two oh A, but it's struck out. Is that what you were thinking?
It might be, let me read.
It's so, anyone under the age of eighteen? Are exempt from licensing requirements?
When they're there, except, yeah, I think that's where I was.
Okay, it's still struck out, though, so.
I know, it's under the age of eighteen who were suspended. So. So, that, that just, that just meant that they didn't need the license. So, that means the kids can pop up the lemonade stands, because I don't know if recall, we would get people complaining that kids were selling lemonade and they don't have a business license, so that.
That is so lame.
So, this doesn't, this doesn't actually, from what I was just reading real quick, it doesn't prohibit someone from coming and knocking on your door. However, in the one section, it does say on, you know, it's prohibited on private property if the owner, tenant, or lawful occupant has asked the person not to solicit on the property or has posted a sign clearly indicating that the dis-.
No soliciting.
Are not welcome on the property.
That's how I read it.
So, that's how, like, if, if someone knocks on your door, Commissioner Riordan, and you say, you know, I don't, you know, go away, or, you know, I don't wanna hear you, and they refuse, you can call the cops and they can cite them under this now. But it doesn't prevent them from actually initially starting, does that make sense?
Yes, they're allowed to come knock on the door and sell their product, but once they are asked to leave, then they need to leave.
That is correct, yeah.
Sorry, we're usually not this unprepared, but it's been a while since we've reviewed this one.
I'd like to see a deal in there that miners are excluded, you know.
So, you can approve with the language being.
We all agree on that and know it, but later on in the future, you know, have it in writing that the miners are exempt. Not that too many kids go door to door anymore, but.
Would you like that under?
Where, where are we on?
Just the prohibited sec, solicitation, so it'd be eleven dash oh eight dash oh twenty? And we can do a subsection C that says exceptions?
Or if you just added A back in there, and maybe changed, take out the license requirement and say they are exempt from the article except for when they are acting as agents of adults, or something like that. You see where seventeen oh eight oh two oh A? That basically says the intent, it just maybe take out the license requirement portion of it. In the event that they're out selling Girl Scout cookies or candy bars or whatever fundraisers that they do, we're not arresting children.
No, but he's saying to strike nothing. So, so if I understand correctly, let me read it the way I think I'm understanding Commissioner Riordan. Miners under the age of eighteen who participate in solicitation activities are exempt of this article except when they are acting as agents of adults covered by this article?
Does that make sense to everybody?
Yes.
Just so it's in writing, and that way, there's no question.
Let's basically leave this as is.
About those foreign exchange students that go around selling bu, was it books?
Yeah.
Are they gonna be exempt from this as well? Sorry for.
They're under eighteen. Like, really, from when I was reading this, because so, zero ten, right, that's just the definitions. That's what we come back to when we have a question as far as defining. So then, if we scroll. So, oh two, we had taken out. So, really, the next thing we have is what was zero seven one, or seventeen dash zero eight dash zero seven one. That's where we really get into like what's prohibited. And like I said, it really just sets guidelines, like no aggressive manner in public areas. You know, not within fifteen feet of, like I said, the bank, the bank stuff, private property. If you say you want them to leave, they can leave, so. Like, it doesn't prohibit them from knocking on your, you know, door. It's just if they're asked to leave, they have to leave, if they refuse to leave.
Or if it says no soliciting, yeah.
Or if it's posted.
And then also, you know, from any occupant of a motor vehicle that is in traffic. So, they can't come, if you're in, on white sands, they cannot come up to your car. Yeah. You know, this, what, 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 yeah, what was seventeen oh eight oh seven two? You know, no solicitation on or near street or highway. Again, they can't walk into the street, they can't interrupt the flow of traffic.
So, are we trying to regulate the panhandlers down on White Sands Boulevard with this portion of?
Well, this, this kinda came, this was still there, we always had obstruction of flow, so I don't think it's specific. It's protesters, or even people who are, you know, the car wash signs, like, it's not necessarily just for panhandlers. It's for anybody who's in that area that's obstructing the flow, so this was our, this was in.
So, the car wash people will be potentially cited?
They can obstruct the flow, they won't be cited, they just can't obstruct the flow of the traffic.
They can be on the sidewalks, but they can't be in the street.
They can't impede traffic.
Yes.
Like I said, nothing in this like stops, you know, something from actually like going to door to door, you know, necessarily approaching people per se. They just have, they have a certain way that they have to do it, and that's what this is saying.
And you said it doesn't affect people over at Walmart if they're stepping off the curb and?
It will affect. If they're stepping out into the curb, it would.
Yeah, so, yeah, if they're actually off the curb and into our streets where it's obstruction of, or impeding the flow, or, yes, this does, this is what that pertains to.
Well, the thing about Walmart is the majority of that is private property. So, if they're stepping out, say, just south of First Street, that's all, that's gonna be.
So, that's at the light, and they are impeding traffic?
So, it's not between Walmart and Margot's, correct? It's if they come out onto First Street.
Onto First Street, right.
If they go out to First Street, yes. Actually, the driver is responsible as well. So, if the driver is stopping the flow of traffic in order to hand money or whatever.
Hand the money, yeah.
They're actually, they're, they actually can be cited for this as well. I can't remember ever in my past that we've cited the driver for being charitable and things like that, but that is an option.
Do we need an exemption in there, I don't know if they still do that, but remember when the firefighters used to do pass the, pass the boot or fill the boot? Do we need an exemption in there for something? Because they, they impede the flow of traffic when they do that, you know? I haven't seen one in, yeah, ten years or so probably, but I didn't know if they still did that. But do we need an exemption in there?
I think if you put an exemption like, like that in there, then you're just opening up another can of worms, because then you're gonna have somebody else that, well, how come they're exempt and we're not?
And I will say something like that too, I mean, our officers do have some discretion, right? So, I mean, if it's, if we're doing fundraisers or like that, but.
I think there's a church that does something like that, similar.
We're gonna cite the fire department, yep.
Breaking the law, you know?
Okay, does anybody else have any questions?
Just to go back to the door to door salespeople, just to be clear. If the police get a call that there's some guy in the neighborhood knocking on doors, trying to sell, you know, and he was acting aggressive, you get there, he's five houses down, you don't have anyone's word for, are we gonna like take these people off the street and not let them do their business?
Well, we have to have probable cause as a site, right? So, a lot of people have ring doorbells. If you just show me your ring doorbells, show them that this guy was being aggressive, you told him to leave multiple times, not only do we have a soliciting statute to fall on, or ordinance to fall on, we also have possible trespassing as well. So, if they're aggressive, then that, there's a lot of different aggressive behavior listed in here.
Yeah.
So, we could cite for that and potentially trespassing, so. But in order for us to rest on it, we'd have to actually, have to be in our presence, we'd have to actually see it happen. But in order to take action and cite them, all we need is probable cause and any sort of proof. Video camera, or maybe we see them having a conversation with the neighbor across the street or five doors down, keep an eye on them or something like that. Or if we're getting multiple calls, it just depends.
I'm just worried, I mean, the first thing you learn in sales, never stop at the first no. Like, that's the number one rule. There's gonna be people coming in town that will continue to push after the first no. Doesn't mean they should, but I mean, that, that's sales, that's the number one rule.
I usually get like three or four rebuttals from them before they'll leave.
Usually they'll stop at two or three, but I've never met a single salesperson that stops a no. That's just not in their DNA.
And then, one other quick question on the, like, basically the panhandlers, I know this is trying to go after those guys when they step out into the road and impede traffic, but unless you guys actually see them do that, then how are we gonna enforce that part of it? I mean, you're literally gonna have to see them do it in order for us to cite them, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
So, we get a call, we can park, you know, block away.
And observe, okay, okay. Do we get a lot of calls for that?
We get a few calls over there at Walmart.
By Walmart?
Lot of them.
Both, both entrances there?
One in particular, there's, there's a guy over there that's pretty aggressive. However, he likes to float on private property. So, part of this says that if the, if the business wishes to put up signs saying no soliciting or no whatever, trespassing, or whatever, if they post that, we can enforce that, but that has to be the business that restricts them from their property.
Okay.
I think there are likely issues, yeah.
So, my question is, is, are, do you guys want to add an exception in here, or are we good with the language as it is?
I would like personally for the miners, just to, in writing, exempt them, just so there's no question about it. You know, but I don't know how everybody else feels.
I don't know, if we exempt them, are we exempting from the whole thing, so?
No, just the, like. No, just the, like, you know what I mean, the, the school, the school fundraisers, the candy bars, the, they do cakes and, you know, that kind of stuff. Or the Girl Scouts selling cookies, that kind of stuff, you know, when you have a minor out there doing that kind of thing.
We're not restricting anybody at this point, right? So if everybody can do it, why, I don't see why we would exempt, uh.
Do you mean exempting them from the no soliciting sign?
From the no soliciting part of it, well.
Saying no?
Really can't do that.
Yeah, we really can't do that part of it, so. I don't, I just don't want to see out there.
Technically, they're allowed, I mean, pursuant to this, we're not saying that they can't.
Right.
We're simply saying that if you're going to do this.
Yeah.
You have to follow certain things.
Right.
Um, so that's why I was just wanting clarification. I mean, do you just want me to add something in there and bring it back? Are we good?
Leave it the way it is and just don't want to see us arresting children for selling candy bars. We'll make front page news.
I would hope that our officers would then buy a candy bar.
Technically, we can't cite a juvenile at municipal court either, so, uh, it wouldn't really be enforceable of them.
Make a motion that we approve item seventeen.
Okay, I have a motion from Commissioner Burnett to approve item seventeen. Do I have a second?
Paul's second.
A second from Mayor Pro Tem Wright. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Carl Milton.
Aye.
Nick Paul.
Aye.
Stephen Burnett.
Aye.
Josh Reardon.
Aye.
Sharon McDonald.
Aye.
Dusty Wright.
Aye.
Susan Payne.
Aye. Motion passes seven zero. We will move on to item eighteen.
I believe that's me again.
Yeah. I'm right there with you.
I am prepared on this.
Consider an act upon ordinance sixteen ninety for first publication amending chapter eleven, article six, section one sixty unauthorized presence in drainage channels, arroyos and irrigation channels. Do you want to go first?
Yes, I can go first if you. So, uh, Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem Commissioners, um, so this is one of several ordinances that we're bringing forth. As a result of the city's work with other agencies in the city, really coming from the whole juvenile shooting, um, at our parks. This is one of the ordinances that, um, we're bringing in response to that. When we were meeting with, um, specifically the DA's office, Scott Key, as well as the police department, myself, Stephanie and the mayor, we were all kind of trying to figure out what can we do concerning some of the issues that we've been seeing, especially with juveniles. And one of the things that was brought up was that juveniles, along with other people, have been going into our ditches and, you know, vandalizing. They've been graffitiing stuff, um, and just kind of hanging out there. And so this ordinance is in response to that. And essentially what the ordinance, it's a complete overhaul of this ordinance. The original ordinance, as you see, it only involved, um, people who were driving vehicles in our ditches and arroyos. Whereas the new ordinance, it, you know, it encompasses a lot more. You know, basic, it is unlawful for any person to enter or remain in a water convenience system. We define what a water convenience system is, you know. In the definitions part, you know, irrigation channels, it's engineered or natural channel intending to transport water, including an arroyo drainage canal. Irrigation canal or piping, so none of our canals, people can't be just going in there unless they're authorized. Additionally, I will say too that we are going to be posting no trespass signs, um, throughout those areas to try to prevent people from, you know, going in there, and it's going to be a trespassable offense. There is some language that I, after speaking with multiple agencies yesterday, we would like to change or add, I should say. Um, and so section F of this ordinance, uh, right now it says the penalty set forth in section one dash zero one dash one hundred shall apply for violation of this section. We would like to add, um, language that says the officer shall issue a criminal trespass citation to a person for violating this section. This just clarifies it for our police officers. If they see someone who's in our, in the, um, canals, they're not authorized to be there. They need to be trespassing them. Um, and this is also a safety thing, too. I mean, if we all of a sudden had a big rainstorm or there's rain up on the mountain, water comes through, we don't want anyone getting hurt. Uh, additionally, we would like to add a section, um, G. This deals more specifically with juveniles. We would like to add this section. This was actually recommended by the juvenile probation office, um, to add this section. And so we would like to add language that says juveniles, um, minors under the age of eighteen years of age in violation of this ordinance shall be issued a criminal trespass under New Mexico statutes annotated section thirty dash fourteen dash one. Juvenile shall be referred to the juvenile probation office. What this does is as we mentioned before, we cannot cite juveniles into municipal court. We actually have to cite them under state statute. Listing the state statute helps from when it helps our officers because then they're not searching for the statute. But also should that statute ever change, like their definitions or whatever of a criminal trespass, it's still covered for the juveniles and we will still be citing the juveniles under that criminal trespass. Referring it to the juvenile probation office, that is the standard requirement when you are citing a juvenile. Again, I'm just making this very clear for our officers that this is the process that we want to be handled if they catch any juveniles in these water channels. And that does, I guess, does anyone, uh, have any questions or?
I know, like, when I was a kid here in Alamo, right over here on Washington Street, we used to play in that ditch when it would rain. I mean, I understand the intent of what we're trying to do here. It's mainly right down here by the high school. But if the officers see kids playing in rainwater in the ditch, are we going to have some sort of a leeway in this or are we going to just start sending a bunch of kids over to, you know, junior probation? Like I say, I understand the intent of this is to help with the issue we had down here.
One of the things, of course, is we're going to have to have the signage, like I said, right? Because a part of criminal trespasses, they should know or should have known, um, that they were not permitted to be there. And the way we get around that is by having the signs. So I mean, if there's no signs, they're going to have a defense, obviously. And I know, like, we're definitely putting signs, you know, on the big canal over here.
Yes, it's the core, the core project.
Yeah.
But like, say, uh, there's a ditch right here on Washington Street. Used to, I lived on Seventeenth Street when I was a kid. I'd ride my bicycle right by the tennis courts and go up over the hill, cross the ditch and go up Eighteenth Street to a buddy's house. You catch me in the ditch riding my bicycle, just crossing it, are, are we going to be cited into junior, whatever you call it, the probation office?
Technically, the way the ordinance is written right now, as it is, you wouldn't be able to ride your bicycle, because that's considered, can be considered a vehicle. Just saying.
It's not a motorized vehicle, but. Do you understand where I'm going with that? I mean, I don't want to be penalizing, you know, good kids that are just out playing and having a good time. You know, they may be in a drainage ditch or, or on the edge of the drainage ditch.
And I will say that is where a lot of what JPO does, or sorry, juvenile probation office, I call it JPO, it's just what I'm familiar with. They assess all that stuff.
But do we really need to be sending them to JPO? I, I understand the intent, like saying, I know you guys would use discretion to some extent, but I'm not worried about the ones we have now, but in the future.
I, I would say.
No.
I'll say that. This was at the request of both Chief Kunihiro and of the JPO. So this isn't something that we just put in there and it's like, oh, you got to deal with the glidden, you know? This is something that we had a collaborative effort with them, with the district attorney. So if a kid is playing in a ditch, they shouldn't be playing in a ditch because we can have a, like, you guys remember the flooding that happened on Florida? We got the calls, a million calls, and everyone's saying it's flooding, and we're like, you all are full of it because it's sunny skies. And they were right. So technically, they shouldn't be playing in a ditch because it's, I say, it's, it's glidden going to go and arrest every kid in it. No, there's still officer discretion in that, but.
Say, our, our intent here is to deal with the issue right, right down here at the high school, for the most part.
Well, our intent is because it's not just, this came as a result of Chief Kunihiro asking us, can you look at the ditches ordinances? Because they are getting calls about not just the juveniles in the ditch, I mean, in the, the arroyo. They're getting homeless people, other people in there. So they're getting calls about, and there's nothing they can do right now. So, yes, that's going to take care of one of the issues where even our SRO was out there saying that they go and have to go in the ditches and looking for kids, making sure they're not smoking pot and doing all that. Yes, that's one of, that's one side of it, but the other side of it, there's other people in the ditches and they don't have any authority right now to do anything about it.
Yeah, this applies to everybody. It doesn't just apply, that's what I like about it. It doesn't just apply to the juveniles. It applies to adults, too. And, um, that's another thing that we just need to get a handle on. I, I.
Didn't know it was such a problem.
It is a huge problem. It is an absolute huge problem. People are.
I ride my four wheeler in the ditch, like, you know, so.
No, people are pitching tents in the ditch. People are sleeping in the ditch. People are living in these ditches and we can't have that. We, we absolutely cannot have that, and if we don't get a handle on it, it's just going to get worse.
You have locations, just so, I, I haven't seen them, but I've been busy, busy here lately, so do we know where in town? There is one, when you go down Lavelle Road, I swear it's a tent. It's in the, the big drainage ditch. It may just be a very, very large tumbleweed, but it looks like it's a tent set up in there.
There's one over by the high school. The one behind, the one I get the call on a lot is the one, uh, it's, it's right there by Walmart on New York. That gym, that it used to be a gym or something. You know where I'm talking about? There's a ditch right there.
Murphy's, right there?
Oh, I know who you're talking about, but the, behind the old air gas.
There's a ditch behind it and.
Old air gas.
Okay, okay.
The people that, that use that, it's a gym, it's some kind of a gym.
Yeah, it is.
Yeah, and, um, they're telling me that they're actually, they don't like to stand outside. And like, so they go to the gym and then they're talking afterwards, and they don't like to stand outside because there's people congregating in that ditch. And it's, I guess, a lot of, they have like some women's exercise classes there and they said that they don't feel safe because of that. So, yeah, it's an, it's an issue. Oregon Park, obviously, that ditch right there is an issue. So there's several place, uh, the one, um, the one over by, uh, well, it used to be the Rocket White Sands.
Yeah, the barbecue, uh, what is it?
Yeah.
The barbecue place, there's a couple of places there because you can see their stuff.
And definitely the one up by, uh, Foothills Park. That one's pretty bad, too. So, yeah, they're all over and, and if we don't get a handle on it, it's going to get worse. I, um, I was driving home, my husband and I were driving home the other day and we took that, that property we just traded. Did you ever go look at that? Yeah.
That's the one you talked to us about the other day.
Yeah, and, um, the one we just traded.
One by Murphy's.
Yes, where it veers off, there's a big bush right there and these people are living there, like, they have their tent there and all their stuff. And I'm like, that's a major, you know, White Sands is a major thoroughfare and people are coming into our town and, and that's what they have to see.
That's actually private property, though.
I, I, I get that, but it's still an issue.
It cuts off right there by that drainage.
We were looking at the property boundaries and you can see where Murphy's ends and where
It looks like it's right outside.
City begins, kind of.
No, and I understand that, but I'm just saying, even with private property, I mean, it's private property, so what, we let ten? It's not a campground either, so, um, and it's not safe, I might add. It's not safe really to set up camp right there, so. But putting that aside, I get a lot of calls, um, about these ditches and, and so this isn't just for juveniles. Although I will tell you that if I had a child of that age, I probably would not be real happy about them playing in the ditches. And, and I, listen, things are not the same as when you were a kid. I hear what you're saying.
It's true.
But they're not even close to the same, and I just don't think it's safe anymore, so.
I do know, like, I take my daughter to whatever that park's called now. It was Kids Kingdom at the time. And, and there are a lot of kids that walk across Washington, they walk through the ditch and come over to the park. You know, and, and they're not doing anything wrong. They're just taking a shortcut across the ditch to get to the park. So hopefully our officers will use some discretion on that if they just see the kid walking across the ditch to go play at the park, that they won't cite them for that. So.
Yeah, I don't, I don't think any of our officers would cite for something like that, um.
You know, if you got one sitting down there smoking a doob and causing trouble, then yes.
Yeah, we got the discretion and also JPO has a lot of discretion as well. If they get something in there, like, they don't.
Yeah, but even, even the trauma of, of a good kid getting cited into JPO and then having to go through all of that when they're a good kid, I, I just, I don't want to see them go down that road, so.
I see this mainly being enforced by the hos, or by the high school.
By the high school.
Kids are, um, basically going down there to smoke pot.
Yes.
And fight and do whatever they do.
Yeah, that's what we did when we were in high school, too, so. We went over to the tree, though.
But now they got guns.
Yeah.
Yeah. And they use them. And it doesn't seem to stop as an adult either, so.
So I would be asking you guys to pass this, uh, with the proposed, uh, changes that I verbally outlined. Additionally, I did email them all to you guys the other night, too.
Okay. Anybody else have any more questions? If not, do I have a motion to consider an act upon ordinance sixteen eighty-nine?
I move that we approve, um, sixteen eighty-nine with the changes that were stated.
Okay, I have a motion from Commissioner McDonald. Do I have a second? A second?
We're on sixteen ninety, aren't we? Yeah, it's.
Oh, I'm sorry, sixteen ninety.
Sixteen ninety.
Sixteen ninety.
Can you tell I'm ready to go home? Okay, sixteen ninety. And Commissioner McDonald, your motion still stands?
Yes.
Okay, and I have a second from Commissioner Paul. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Carl Milton.
Aye.
Nick Paul.
Aye.
Stephen Burnett.
Aye.
Josh Reardon.
Aye.
Sharon McDonald.
Aye.
Dusty Wright.
Aye.
Susan Payne.
Aye. Motion passes seven zero. We're going to move on to item nineteen. Consider an act upon ordinance sixteen eighty-nine for first publication. Do you want to talk about that?
I guess if I have to.
I mean, I can do it if you.
No, you're good. So again, this is another ordinance that we're bringing, um, in response to a lot of, um, really like the juvenile crime that's been happening. So we already have a curfew ordinance on the books. Um, we're simply amending this. And really, we're only changing a few things. Additionally, there is some changes that I would like to make verbally to this based on, um, conversations that we had yesterday with the joint meeting between several agencies, um, throughout the city. So as you see from this ordinance in section A, really the only thing we're changing is it, it was sixteen years of age. We're changing it to eighteen years of age. Under section B, the exceptions, we're adding, um, or a minor with emancipated documentation. If you have emancipated documentation, you are no longer really considered a minor. In section C, uh, right now it states it shall be the duty of peace officers to apprehend and take into custody. I would like to strike out the language that says apprehend and take into custody and, and add language that says, um, detain and investigate. The reason behind that is we cannot, um, take into custody juveniles anymore, especially based on this, which is why we're saying detain, you know, so stop the juvenile. Um, and they, and the officers can investigate to find out why they're out or past the curfew. Additionally, on section D, towards the end there, it says the proper juvenile authorities. I would like to strike that language and change it to, um, child, youth and families department, uh, department. Or as a lot of us know is.
Children, youth and families, yeah.
CYFD.
We're going to send them to CYFD.
That is the proper juvenile authority. We had this conversation, um, during our meeting yesterday where JPO was involved, and JPO's concern was they're not the appropriate authority because this deals with, and I'll read the whole thing to you, procedure when parent or guardian cannot be located. Well, we're not going to call JPO when a parent can't be located. If we can't locate a parent, the appropriate person to call is CYFD, um, and they will then try to find the parents or figure out the situation that's going on. And so we just wanted to make that clear again, so there's no misunderstandings with our officers or anything. Any questions?
I was looking at what Santa Fe and Albuquerque does and.
I was looking at what Santa Fe and Albuquerque does and they also have the $500 fee, the fine, but that's on each violation. It doesn't build up to that. Is there a reason why we started at 250?
So, I mean, we had this conversation a little bit and we, I guess we kind of went back and forth. We just felt like for the first violation, we'd keep, give people a little bit of slack. Hopefully, things get resolved with the first violation. But then the second violation is a, you know, is the maximum that we can actually do, which is $500.
And did we decide, we decided to keep warning, the warning in there?
Yeah.
Oh, I guess, oh, I forgot.
I think we're supposed to take that out.
We talked...
I agree with the warning on the first one, you know.
Um, the warning, sorry, Mayor, for your reference, the warning that we took out dealt with the ditches.
The ditches, okay, okay.
And so that's, that's where the warranty, the warning was.
Because we decided the signs were the warning.
Correct.
Yeah.
And so, yeah, I guess it's, we decided to do kind of like the first offense. You might have a reason, right? There might be a little bit more flexibility. Additionally, I mean, obviously our officers will have discretion, you know. You know, we do have exceptions in here, you know, if they're going to work or from work, stuff like that. But there might be an emergency situation where I guarantee our officers will not be citing people for this. But yeah, the first offense is a warning, the second offense is a $250 fine, and the third offense is the maximum that our courts can do, which is the $500 fine. You know, we're, we're, we're cutting some people some slack, you know, the first time, you know, there might be some reason behind, you know, good understanding. But the second time, all right, you know, we're going to do a tougher punishment, especially on the parents. And then third offense, you know, there's, in our minds, there's very little excuse for that.
I just think that might lead to confusion. People think they get fined $250, they think, okay, it's going to be $250. They do it again, $500. They think we just change it on them. I mean, they're not going to read the ordinance.
I will say we have progressive penalties for other things too, so...
Yeah.
Will officers tell them that? You know?
Tell them that they're going to get...
Yeah, so they're getting a warning the first time. Will they tell them what the progression is as far as the penalty, if it continues? Do they do that? I don't know if they do that or not.
Usually not.
Okay.
Usually the court has the records of how many times they, times they've been cited unless that particular officer's dealt with that parent several times and knows, hey, you're on your third strike, buddy, sort of thing.
Okay, so if they give them a warning the first time, they, they would necessarily say to them, we're just giving you a warning this time, but the next time it will be a $250 fine or something like that?
Yeah, well, typically we say next time you're going to be cited. This is going to be a non-traffic, so go to court, they'll have to go to court. We don't assign the penalty assessment, the judge does. So we'll, we'll have knowledge of what the fine amount is. Keep in mind, the fine amount is, it says what, $50? I might not have the current copy, I don't...
No, it's, it's $250.
Okay.
That's not, it's not up to $250.
So that's plus court fees, correct? So that's just the...
So no, this is, so it's, it's basically going to be a penalty assessment, right? So it's going to, it would act as like a penalty assessment because it says, under the agency, um, so there will be a, a $250 fine on the second violation. The way I think of it, it's kind of like our DWIs, right? So your first DWI, it's like nine, is it seven days incarcerations max, something like that. Second, uh, second DWI, it goes up to like 90 days, you know. Third offense, you know, now we're getting into felony territory. Same thing kind of like this is each offense. But that doesn't negate, like, when it comes to me, so as a prosecutor, if you have, if it's your third offense and you have maybe a good reason, I can plea you down to a second offense. I would have that authority to do that. That'd be my discretion. I can always plead it down. But we're saying that if it's a third offense, if he's, if they are charged, found guilty, convicted of a third offense, then it shall be a $500 fine. Does that make sense?
What is our current...
Just think that's too lenient compared to what other cities are doing.
What is our current curfew ordinance? What is our, what is our current curfew ordinance?
This is it. They're just striking something out.
So the current curfew ordinance, so for violation, are you talking about for the violations?
Is it exactly...
Yeah, it's what I struck out. So, I mean, it's for the violation of this section, the minor shall be released to the custody of his parent or guardian or other person. Having care or custody of the minor upon written promise that such parent or guardian will assume the responsibility, that said child will comply with the provisions of the section, the juvenile authorities shall make a written report, which there is no juvenile authorities, and keep a record of each violation. Any parent, guardian, or other adult person having the care and custody of a minor violating this section shall be punished in accordance with section 11-01-050. That's what it is on the books right now.
That's current.
I, yeah, I've struck that and I added where I'm basically saying, you know, this is a first offense, warning, second offense, $250 fine, third offense, $500 fine. Again, that's the max we can even do.
Does this fall under like school hours?
No.
So no, and I...
It's got a section that allows...
So no, because this is, so it says, it's from, on weekdays, which is Sunday through Thursday, from 11:00 PM to 6:00 AM, so that'd be like your school nights. And on weekends, from 12:00 midnight to 6:00 AM. I will say we are bringing a parks, we will be bringing a parks ordinance that's going to deal with juveniles during school, which may address some of your concerns when we bring that one up.
This is, this, you know, a few weeks ago, because I almost, I know, hard to believe, I almost got a little soft and said, oh, well, maybe, maybe we should rethink this. And then we had five juveniles tear up our city. And they did tens of thousands of dollars in damage. And I was like, forget it. We, you know, and, and I heard what Ms. Thomas said earlier, I heard it, but I don't agree with it. I don't think it's our job to provide... Childcare, yeah, exactly. I don't think it's our job. And I, and I disagree because I do think there's a lot of things for kids to do within this city other than knock over people's motorcycles or crash people's cars or break people's windows and...
My sister-in-law's car was stolen, so I completely get it.
No, I know, I know. I'm just saying that I, I think, I think that, I, I, I mean...
And this goes to my point.
Right.
Why even issue a warning? This is a serious issue that is already victimizing people.
How many, how many times in the past few years have we enforced our current curfew? Do you, do you have those numbers?
Honestly, I, I can't. I don't know of any.
You don't know of any?
No.
Okay.
Actually enforcing them, we might have picked up kids and... And taken them home. But as far as citing parents, I, I don't recall any.
We can't, or under the current ordinance, we can't cite parents. And they're really, under the current ordinance, there really isn't, it's not really punishable. It, it doesn't have any teeth. I mean, we mentioned, you know, the juvenile authorities doing a written report. We don't have juvenile authorities anymore. I mean, this ordinance was done in 1960. That's how old this ordinance is. That's why we're like, all right, it definitely needs to be brought back.
And these fines, are they going towards the children or the parents?
So we cannot find the kids because like we can't do the juveniles, right? So that's where the only person we can go is the parents. And so we're basically saying, parents, parents are legal guardians, you are responsible for your kids. I mean, technically they are, in the eyes of the court, they are responsible for their kids, always have been. And so we're going after the parents for, you know, for this. We can't go after the juveniles.
So one of the things that we've learned through this process, that I learned, some people knew already, but I learned, was that in the entire state of New Mexico, there's four juvenile facilities. And so, for example, the kids that were caught the other night, I, I asked Cooney specifically, I said, what was their reaction when they were caught? And he said, they laughed at them because they didn't have beds for five kids. And so all of those kids got to go home to their parents. And will their parents be held liable? Probably, I mean, as far as paying for the damage, but do they have the money for it? You know, that's a whole, that's like a social justice issue that I'm not even going to get into. But, but I was pretty, pretty frustrated to find out that four juvenile facilities in the entire state of New Mexico and five kids that tore up not just our city, but Tularosa and everything in between, and they're laughing at our officers and they get to go home to their parents. And I'm like, wow, what, what have we taught them?
That's you, I would have rather have gone to the juvenile facility than go home, so...
Well, you know what?
That was back in the day though.
I suppose that really depends, yeah. I mean, my kids would have rather, well, my kids...
I would have rather have gone to jail than go home.
Yeah, yeah, but, but not everybody has that.
Right.
Not everybody has that home life, right? And I recognize that too, but from a government standpoint, we can't be, we can't be concerned about that. We have to be concerned about these kids. What was it, like 3:00 in the morning or something? I mean, it was something stupid like that. I'm like...
So...
And some of them as young as 13. Why are 13-year-olds running our streets at 3:00 in the morning, unsupervised?
Their parents.
Yeah, they all went home to their parents, so we know they have parents, so...
So I think one of the questions is, I mean, I hear, you know, Commissioner Melton, his concern obviously is, you know, the progression. Do we want to do away with the progression? Do we want to just do a warning for the first violation and then the second violation's a $500 fine? Do we like the progression? I mean, I can change this if you guys want.
We've established that it's common sense. The parents have to care for their children. We are not the babysitters.
I feel a warning on the first offense if it happens a second time.
This is why they laugh when they get away, because we, we're not serious. This isn't serious.
I guess it depends on what, what it is that they're doing. I mean, if they're just out and about roaming, if they're destroying somebody's property...
All I know is this is getting worse year by year.
Can we put that in the ordinance? That if you're, say, out tearing up people's property, breaking windows, can we fine you automatically first offense? But if you're just out wandering around, not creating any big issue, can we do that?
I don't think so.
I'm not going to, that would make it a lot more complicated.
Yeah, very would.
Versus, you know, kind of, you've got to remember though too, like if some, in that situation where they're vandalizing, they're stealing, they're breaking into cars, they're going to be cited by the officers. So they're, I mean, the kids are going to be punished that route, right? The parent, you know, the, the question is like, you know, what's going to happen to the parents? And, I mean, I will say, if the juveniles are, just from experience, if the juveniles are getting a criminal case in juvie, in juvenile court, the parents are going to have to go to court because most of the judges will make the parents a part, party of the case. Just for your all's reference, I, that's, I did juveniles for a little bit and I know from experience that the judges usually require that.
I think we should leave the warning in there for the first offense on it, but, you know...
I mean, they can always come before the commission and make a case if it truly was a misunderstanding.
Well, I don't know if y'all ever, I mean, I knew kids that would sneak out of the house, mom and dad were asleep, they may not even know that their kids were out, you know, I just saw...
Well, they'd find out real quick, wouldn't they?
You do, you do. But, you know, kids are going to be kids, so...
In that situation, the parent comes to me, you know, if, if it's a case, you remember, I have prosecutorial discretion too, I mean, something like that. And especially, I mean, if it's a one-off, I mean, yeah, if it's a second time, all right, we need to figure something out. You know, what's going on, parents, what, you know, what do we need to figure out, or what do you guys need to figure out? And it might be something where I have, might have to refer some families to like, I know, like CYFD and stuff, they have resources. I might be referring people to those kind of things as well. This is, this is not a, obviously this is not a cure-all, right? This is not going to fix everything. If anything that we learned from yesterday with, you know, yesterday's meeting, we had JPO, we had the county, we had the school board, you know, I, we had some of the commissioners here. We all have to work together in order to, you know, kind of accomplish our general, you know, goal. And that's, you know, to kind of fix this, the juveniles running, you know, rampant through the city.
It's sad that the government has to get involved in that though.
It is. I mean, unfortunately, that's just where we're at.
I don't mean to interrupt. Ashley, can we have somebody put a motion on the table? I love you guys dearly, but we are literally going on 25 minutes.
I just want to say one quick thing. This was also a request of Chief Cooney Harrell to have us look at this, to give them some authority that they don't currently have, so...
Okay.
I think the only thing I would like to change is a warning on the first time, but the second time be a $500 fine. I mean, you got your warning. Now it's, you got to pay up.
I'm good with that.
So does everyone, okay, so I guess before we do a, or agree on the motion, does everyone agree with that? And I'll just strike...
250?
Yeah.
That works.
And I'll just put a, a $500 fine on each subsequent violation?
So a, a warning first one and then 500 after?
So what it will read, just so you guys know, so parents, legal guardians, or any other person having care or custody of a minor under the age of 18 years who violate this section will be given a warning on the first violation and a $500 fine on each subsequent violation.
Yes.
And is it a warning per parent or per child if they have multiple teenagers?
I say per child.
I mean, right now we have a custody of a minor, so...
That covers the kids sneaking out the window.
Yes.
Right? Okay. All right, are we good? Do we want to make a motion?
Make a motion to approve item 20.
Okay, I have a motion from Commissioner Burnett to approve...
That's only 19.
Oh, 19, sorry.
To approve item...
We're on truancy.
We're tabling the next one, so...
We're on 1689.
I have a motion from Commissioner Burnett to approve...
I was looking at the wrong one.
Item 19. Do I have a second?
Second.
A sec, with the changes, right? With the changes? Okay. I have a second from Commissioner Melton. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Carl Melton?
Aye.
Nick Paul?
Aye.
Stephen Burnett?
Aye.
Josh Reardon?
Aye.
Sherri McDonald?
Aye.
Dusty Wright?
Aye.
Susan Payne?
Aye. Motion passes seven zero.
Oh, shit, I was looking at the wrong truancy. Yeah.
Um, we're gonna move on to item 20, we're actually going to.
Table it.
We're going to table this, and the reason is because, and, I should probably explain, so people aren't completely confused, we actually had a stakeholders' meeting yesterday right here in the chambers, we had, as you meant, as Ashley mentioned, we had various law enforcement agencies, I know Commissioner Paul came, Commissioner McDonald, we had law enforcement, we had the public schools, juvenile probation, I, boy, did I learn a lot yesterday, and I learned more from the public schools in maybe less than 10 minutes than I have since I've been trying very hard to reach out to them about this, and so, I learned a lot yesterday, it was interesting, but, based on that conversation, we've decided to table the truancy ordinance, and we're going to be bringing it back as a, under the parks ordinance, because the idea with this truancy ordinance, I think it was a little misleading, because people thought that we were gonna regulate truancy, and that really wasn't the purpose, the purpose of this was, if nobody's gonna regulate truancy, and apparently, based on state law, it's nearly impossible, then we need to limit the city's liability, which is keep them out of our parks during times when they should be in school or our public spaces, based on the conversation yesterday with juvenile probation, if we bring it back under the parks ordinance, similar to, if you're in our park after a certain time at night, you are cited for trespassing, we will add a section to our parks ordinance that if juveniles are in our parks during the day, during times when they should be in school and they'll follow the APS calendar, they will be cited for trespassing, what that does is, it gives it a little more teeth, because, under the way we had it, they couldn't really refer them to juvenile probation or anything like, I, I don't have all the technical terms, they couldn't really be cited, like, they could call their parents, tell them to come get them, that kind of thing, but they couldn't really be cited, so if we bring it back under a parks ordinance, where they can be cited for trespassing, then they have to go to court, and they can be referred to juvenile probation, so that's how we were gonna deal with that, obviously, we didn't have time to do that, but I believe that Ashley did email everybody a copy of what we were thinking, if you want to read that, and we're gonna bring that back on January 9th, so, first meeting in January.
Does that address homeschool kids?
Well.
It would be any.
It's unsupervised, the, the key is unsupervised, the key is, you know, if you're a kid and you're in the park with your parents, because you're homeschooled or whatever, then that's fine, if you're a kid and you're, and, and obviously, we don't have the ordinance yet, but, but it will be something similar to that, but if you're a kid in the park during the day, unsupervised, at a time when you should be in school, yeah, you're probably gonna be cited for it, because there's no way to distinguish, we can't, you really can't do that.
I don't know, because my, my daughter only goes to school for two hours a day.
Right.
That's it.
Right.
Anyway.
But do you, we can talk about this in January, but, but keep in mind, the, the operative word is unsupervised, so.
Make a motion to table item 20.
Okay, perfect, I have a motion from Commissioner Reardon to table item 20, a second from Commissioner Burnett, that's not a roll call vote, is it? Right, okay, all those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Aye, all those opposed, and that is table till January 9th, the last thing we have, thank goodness, is appointments to boards and committees, mayor's committee on aging, we have a current vacancy, an application by Antonio Castro Jr. was received, if appointed, this would be his first term, does anybody know him? Does anybody have any objections? Okay, if not, I will appoint him, airport zoning board, three current vacancies, an application by Rosemary Gomez-Mead was received, if appointed, this would be her first term, does anybody know her, have any objections?
No.
Okay, then I will appoint her to that, and we do still have four current vacancies on the Almagordo Disability Council, we, we need to talk about that, but, we need to talk about that council, but we can talk about that later, because I'm concerned about the four vacancies, but anyway, if there is nothing else.
Motion to adjourn.
I will make a motion to adjourn, I mean, I will entertain a motion to adjourn from Commissioner Reardon, drive a second.
I second it.
A second from Commissioner McDonald, all those in favor, aye.
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 All those opposed, and we are adjourned.